All right, it is now 7:06 on Thursday evening. The...whatever the date is today.
Six, six oh seven.
Six oh seven, thank you. Yeah, I didn't set my watch back, that's why.
Is that what?
Yeah.
You're just getting dyslexic.
No, it's six oh seven, Thursday, November fourteenth, and I will call the meeting to order. It's our budget meeting. We'll hop right into it. I'm gonna give a quick roll call for everybody here. Commissioner McDougal is here, Commissioner Huffer, Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Hoffmeyer, myself, that's Commissioner Merrill, for those on the tape that can't see my bright and shiny face, Commissioner-elect Mr. Walton, and the Director, Mr. Bill Walker. We're gonna talk about the Budget Review and Projected Assumptions for 2014 calendar year. I sent out, I had to, Bill sent out some projected ideas in the last budget. I don't know if they're good or they're bad, but I think we need to talk about stuff all around the room. Just, go ahead.
When you're talking about things, you might tell us the date, because I'm getting a little overwhelmed with pages from the 25th of October, 21st of November.
On the one we're looking at, oops, nope, not that one.
I've got 21 November, I assume that's what we're...
Yes, it is.
That's an addendum for what we're talking about tonight. If you're concerned about the current budget as it relates to next year, Kirk had asked for that. And so I included, along with the budget numbers, were the, that section of my report for next Thursday's meeting that applies to the current status of the budget. But what you have in your hands there, Alan, is just, per Kirk's request, that information, so I...
Okay, so that's not what you're talking to, Sean?
No, it's not.
Okay. Give us a clue.
I'm looking for it, hold on. Um...
So this has the full year, or no, this through October.
Right, it has both of those reports. Actually, the two that I sent you, they're both there. The status as of October 31st compared to where we're supposed to be October 31st, and then the one as of today compared to the entire year, the year.
So the one, the one I just made, the changes to, the latest suggestions I made, are which one? Are they in here?
Well, they're talking about its current status for this current year.
Correct.
They're talking about the revised budget for next year.
Right. Did you have questions about this year?
Well...
Go ahead.
I think to fairly evaluate 14, we better know what we've spent this year, or what we're gonna spend. That's, that's all. So I've been, I spent a lot of time, time trying to... I got the first nine months of 13 in as compared to the budget, and I sent out a spreadsheet to Bill to fill in what he projected the last three months were gonna be. I don't think he's got that far on that yet. So that would really give us an idea of, for the full year of 13, actual to what we're budgeting for. And I think then going and looking at 14, we could say, okay, we overspent here, we need to maybe budget a little more for this item, line item. Overspent here, we're gold, we can reduce it. So that was my thinking on being prepared for tonight, but just not quite there. So in looking at tonight's budget, I, for, I'm sorry, 2014's budget, I'm just, I don't want to put a budget out for 14 that we're gonna have to amend, or that is going to understate actual revenues or overstate expenses, so, or understate expenses, as it may be.
So when will that be done, that Excel sheet we're talking about?
You know, I think in general, our budget's fairly accurate for the last three months of this year, overall. The overall spending amounts. So we're gonna end up overspending because of where we are right now. You know, in the last six weeks of the month, or the last six weeks of the year, I don't see us really being able to get us back to where we ought to be.
Yeah, yeah, because we are at six weeks now before we're done, pretty much. So unfortunately, with the reports, it's hard to, I mean, pretty much everything's real time, as far as, except for maybe a delay in entry in QuickBooks and getting things up to date that way.
Right.
But we should be, I'm just trying to get those numbers pretty close to know how to evaluate 14 and do a good job with it, that's all.
Have other volunteers gonna update that to the point?
Um, we, well, we're...
We have been warned as to how we're gonna do that.
We're currently, we're about to pay another $3,000 plus to make them for the last two months. So that's ongoing. Frankly, you know, with the stuff that we're dealing with right now, I don't see that changing for next year, which is why I'm dealing with what Alan is dealing with. I've got too much paper to hand here, but, which is why there's a significant number on that legal one for next year. So I think it's $24,000.
So you think that it's supposed to be about the same amount of money? Am I probably charged?
It was more than $1,000 for actually actual this year, but I think it's over, and it's gonna end up being in the 30 range. There was $7,800, $30,000 of that was the audit investigation, audit investigation. So that, that, of course, won't happen next year. So that could be taken out, though.
And what about recovering those fees? Wasn't that what everyone pursued?
I handed that over to Bruce, and I'm there working on that right now. So no, no real status of debt. As they said, they are looking into it before we were gonna do anything about it.
Do we still have a state auditor coming for the regular audit?
Yes.
What's our estimate cost on that?
Monday, the 25th. Good question.
Are they gonna be looking back to 2011 and '12, correct? Is that the two years they're gonna look at?
Uh...
I think that's what they, they go back to.
You know, right now, I, I don't have a lot of information about exactly what they're looking at. I know they're, I know they're going to be here on the 25th. I did a follow-up call with them two days ago because of another issue that came up that I wanted to make sure they looked into when they came here. And all they could do was, actually, the lady who had originally emailed me and told me she was gonna be in charge, gave me another name, said that he would be coming instead, running the team. Don't know the names involved, but I replied to her by email with confirmation that I'd be looking into this issue that I brought up with them, and kept her back. So I don't know what years they're covering. Is that the normal process? Is sometime during one year, they look at the...
Yeah, I believe that kind, yeah, because we, it's every other, every other year with us, I believe, so they look at the two completed years, the last two completed years.
Right. And I'm not aware of how much they will cost.
I don't recall what the, I thought I looked at 2000...
It was in the budget.
Ten, yeah, to see what we spent then, but I don't recall what it was.
Alan, do you remember that from 2010? How much we paid for the state auditor to come out and do our review?
It sort of been...
There was certainly an item in the budget back, 2010?
Yes, sir.
I think it was nine.
It was nine, because nine, ten.
Or eleven, I'm sorry, left, we paid it eleven.
So, about it, yeah.
It was a whack, but I can't remember. It wasn't huge, like maybe $1,700 bucks.
$1,700, so 2,000.
But that's really vague. I mean, you're asking for...
Yeah, ballpark.
No.
No.
Tim recollection that it might have been.
I was trying to think about that, that information with the review.
It's all real.
In Ashken, it was in the report, is it? Or is it not?
Can I ask one question? Because there's gonna be a lot of work on this. In a budget, we have line items, and the line items are the fixed things that are audited. And then we have lots of subordinate categories within a line item. And what are the line items in these numbers? Like, is it 570 becomes, or 576.20, or what is the breakdown so that we don't have to look at all the components inside that line item to have the budget done? Does that make sense? Does anyone know the, just how far, like their numbers and the beginnings of the lines?
Oh, like 31 per daily admission, if I'm looking at it.
Like, like 570 under expense, recreational services, and 576.20 is facility reserve, and then NWPRD expenses. And then if you see it goes down, then it breaks, 576.20, 10, salary and wages, and then I assume that that might be a line item. And then all of these salaries underneath it, in fact, are things that are components of that, but over the year, we can actually adjust those if we have a resolution to do it. And I'm just trying to find out where the serious number is. Like, how far down do we have to go? Because if all we have to do is worry about salary and wages as a block, for example, at 576.20, 10, then we don't have to talk about the pool operator's salary except as sort of tangential real component in that number, that's all. You know, but I don't know what the, what the, where the line is. Would you know from state audit?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I see he's breaking them all out per, per position underneath that to get to the total. I think we could look at the total as far as a budget item alone and adjust that accordingly to get it where we want it. And then allow, I, I don't think we have to come up with individual numbers here. Those can all be adjusted through the year.
That's what I'm wondering, it's that 100, there's six-digit blocks, like 400, 402.
Is this all within the same category?
Same line item, that's right.
Yeah, that's all adjustable.
But I just, I don't know what that number is, and I'd really like to be told authoritatively before we start, because we could fuss down in subcategories that don't mean anything, really, over the year.
Right. I get it. So instead of getting into special events, or the running coach, or the youth instructor, we need to pay attention to the salary and wages, and not to the individuals so much?
That's right.
Alan, are you referring to actually coming up with and drafting the budget, or are you referring to what line items we would adjust as the year goes on?
I'm trying to find out what we have to be fixed on and what has flexibility. So when we're addressing a budget, today, for example, trying to frame something out, that we're doing work that we understand is meaningful. If we get sucked into arguing about components inside a line item, it's a discussion of where relative values are inside that item, but it is not something that we have to worry about because we have some flexibility over the year to, to shift stuff back and forth in there. Like, but what we should be doing is setting a quota or a maximum for each of those line items when we're going through the budget. And then that maximum should balance out with whatever the revenue is. Does that make sense? Okay, but I don't know. Do you know what the items are?
I don't know.
It'd be a good thing to know. I don't know either.
You have a list of assumptions right now that drives pretty much every number here.
We have a real problem with the assumptions. Because a lot of those are your assumptions, but not the assumptions of the district, and haven't been, you know? And we've talked about it time and again. And so what we have to do is eventually work through that and get down to numbers that are going to be a budget.
That's why I wrote those assumptions, so that they're counting on me to come up with numbers. So I wrote those assumptions, that's now in your court, so if you do something to those assumptions, you don't like the numbers.
Well, I'll do something with the assumptions, too, because, again, going back to public sector management has against private sector. It's not a matter of what makes money and what doesn't make money, it's what serves the community the best.
That's why I wrote the assumptions, Alan.
So how about a seduction meeting? How about we start with the assumptions?
Yeah, let's look at the assumptions.
Okay, that's okay with me. I'm happy to do anything. I'm not, we're trying to be a fussy, I was just trying to figure out what we're gonna try and do.
Tonight, we're gonna look at the assumptions.
Okay, which, which, the 10, 25, 2013?
Special meeting, can I?
11, 14, okay.
No, it's okay, we're just starting from the beginning.
All right, let's look at the assumptions first.
And we're doing the 11, 14 assumptions.
Should we get these line by line, or did you guys mark which ones you have problems with and wanna discuss?
Let's go line, I think it might be easier for us to just go line by line.
Did you wanna start with the original ones and go through those again? Or do you wanna start with the addendum that I wrote?
Okay, I have...
After he came up with it, I changed.
I'd like to get to the right page, but I...
The number looks like this, one with the agenda.
Right. Okay, and that first budget, the first profit loss budget overview is the one with all the assumptions in it, correct?
Yes. So it's addendum one to budget assumptions, 11, 14, 2013. Is that correct?
That's what I'm suggesting we start with, unless you'd like to go back to the original assumptions that we were looking at three weeks ago.
And that's 10, 25.
That's your page 11.
So now which ones did you review that you weren't, that you were discussing?
All of them.
Should we start with the ones from last?
I don't mind, when we, when we start, I just want to get the right page so we're all together.
Well, I just wanna get from the basics. Good start.
Yeah, well, the basics are, what are we doing?
We're going over your concerns.
So...
Yeah, it seems like you have some issues with some of the assumptions. Why don't you start?
10,000 of them.
Okay, we'll go.
Because I...
Which page are you on, Alan?
I don't know where we're going. I've got page 11 of the...
All right, we're all gonna be on page 11. Go for it, thank you.
For consideration, 10, 25, 2013, budget to be approved by end of November. Now, this first one, then, tax revenue, that's just the resolution that we have to pass and make sure we get into the county asking for our 1% on the money, so that's no problem. And I don't know why we have the other one, because it's gonna come when they send it to us, but that's fine. Most fees have not been raised since 26, and that was a conscious decision of the district over the years not to do it, because we try to provide the best programs possible, as inexpensively as possible to the public, so as many people as possible can enjoy it. And the community's generous enough to give us half a million dollars to keep those fees down. So revenues per this budget assume a 10% increase across the board. We've already voted that down twice this year, and it's in the budget.
But that doesn't mean that it's not open for further discussion.
It means that we've already made a statement on it that we don't approve of.
And I believe three of the board members at the time, and I'll bring this up right now, said that now is not the time.
Yeah.
But now that we're looking at the budget, it may be the time.
I think that that's to discuss it. It's a time to discuss it.
Yeah, that's why, that's exactly what we're saying. Now's the time to discuss it, right.
Let's mark that one to be discussed.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not, we're not saying, we're not saying, hey, it's off the table. We're just saying, hey, we need to discuss it.
And then you've got daily, well, the same, this all goes through that whole set of lines, and increase 15% for daily admission, passes and punches 15%, red cross classes projected at 15... It's nice that they're being offered. You see, the test is not how much something costs, it's how much the community gets out...
How much the community likes it.
How much the community gets out of the program, not how much a thing costs. We try to work with costs, but it's not like a private corporation, and we've talked about this so many times. True aerobics fees are very tough to calculate. Most packed patients of this program use annual passes, which include unlimited aerobics uses. When the fees were set up, annual passes were a baseline for everything, from masters to Enwak, and what happened was then add-ons were put on to the basic fees for the programs that were involved. So a master swimmer paid 20 bucks or more, whatever it was, a month to support the coaching fees, but they had, it's actually just an annual pass that they have like everybody else. The aquatics, what you're talking about here, the aerobics, do the same thing, they have an annual pass. That's what you're talking about. That annual pass is for use of the pool, and we just haven't got an add-on, I guess, for, for aerobics, so we don't know where they are.
There is no aerobics annual pass.
No, no, what I'm saying, that's right, but they can play, they can use their aerobics.
Exactly.
When, I don't know if it was Neil, I think it was, he demanded a higher salary than we were used to paying, and the masters volunteered to increase their annual pass amount to cover part of the cost of that coach. And so it was something that people did when they opted into the masters and said, okay, we would like to get a coach in. If it costs a little more, then we'll add that to our fees. Okay, so this is history.
Okay, so, question?
Yes.
So like swimming Enwak, I should be paying for annual pass for my kid?
You have annual pass and increment, that's right.
Plus the coaching fees.
Well, you do, and you pay for it aggregated, and that increment changes from bronze to gold, whatever, depending on how much...
Gotcha.
You notice it's always talked about as how many hours of coaching, right?
Right.
And that's because that's the add-on to the annual pass.
So if I take my monthly, my monthly dues?
Yes.
All right, you remember, we got a Marine Corps this, so I need crowns and really simple figures here, okay?
I have many figures in my head.
If I pay monthly dues of whatever it is...
Yeah, 12 bucks.
12 bucks per month, right, for 12 months. That's my, that should apply to an annual pass plus extra to pay for the coaching.
That's right, and so you can see the cost of coaching on top of it.
Gotcha, thank you.
So if it's 20, your 8 bucks goes to coaching, and so on.
Okay. So in effect, that's how, because these are things that have come up.
Yes.
That's how, that's why kids get to swim for, people say for free, because people brought this up in public comment. And to be quite honest, I didn't realize the dues structures were set up that way, which would have been nice to know. Because when people say kids swim for free, no, we buy an annual pass just like any other annual pass holder, and an annual pass holder can swim for free.
That's exactly right.
Because they're paying for, they're paying for an annual pass.
They're paying for...
And that's the privilege of an annual pass.
That's right. And that's why the argument for masters, for example, in the hours, is, no, we have the increment, which we have added to the annual pass, which gives us that rate. And then the question becomes, is that increment adequately compensated for in the difference between an annual pass and a master's?
Gotcha.
So that would be, that's how, come that's argued that way all the time.
That's...
So all, all the annual passes are baseline amount?
That's right.
Yeah, that's good to know.
So if I'm understanding, at some point, it seems the discussion went from being team swimming, having annual pass with an add-on, to here's the amount, and the kids go for free.
Right, somebody turned that around.
But that's actually, actually have the annual pass, it was terminology that got...
Right.
It got turned around in the last year, and I don't know how it happened.
And that is, and that is a thing, Steve, because that's obviously incorrect.
It's totally backwards.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a turn around the last year.
Was it two years ago?
I don't know, I mean, it's been longer than that.
I, I think it's important to note here that this idea of an annual pass plus an increment, if you, if you forget about the annual paths and say that everything you pay is this increment, total, all of masters dues and all of Enwak's dues, put them all together, even without considering any of that being an annual pass, all that money doesn't cover the cost of the coaches. All that money, so...
But that's, that's another argument. The thing is, I'm, I don't, I'm not trying to waste people's time, but I'm trying to say you've got a whole set of assumptions based on what we pay, based on the wrong assumptions. Because we can argue, you can get to your point, but let's all do it in the same language, and that way we all understand what we're talking about. You know, that's all.
So if we, yeah.
Well, if you use the language that says that part of your, part of your...
Everybody pays an annual fee.
Masters dues, part of that is an annual pass to the pool. Then you come out even more in the hole as far as being able to cover the coaches' fees.
Uh huh. Yeah, but then you're paying for lane time, which is something that people, you know, we've said we'd never paid for before. And in effect, if you pay for an annual pass, you're paying for lane time. So your water time's covered then.
That is true. Who's gonna cover, who's gonna pay for the coaches?
That's where the community, and I think we've, we've said this before, that the value added to having this program to the community is worth the taxpayers spending the money towards the annual coaches or the water time. It's potato patata, where it's, like you said, we can sit here and argue semantics about whether we're paying for lane time or whether we're paying for coaches. The value's there, right? We agree that, we, we agree that the value is there.
Everybody at this table, I assume, agrees with that.
Yes, and we wanna continue it. So how do we do that in moving forward? And that's something we'll have to figure out.
That's right. Get back, get rid of a number of the assumptions they were on. Swim lesson program is expected to grow. I, I question the numbers, because as I looked at the budget, it looks to me like that attendance has dropped in the swim schools along with everywhere else, if I look at the revenue.
Yeah.
It seems like the bronze and the silver are still fairly level, but...
You're talking swim school?
No, I was swimming, they're doing...
You're doing swim team, he's doing...
I'm not talking swim school.
Yeah. There's a, if you look at the last couple of monthly reports, which you don't have in front of you right now, the ones from the regular meetings, it looks like there's a little bit less in swim school. But, for instance, the number you'll see at the next week's meeting that I just sent out today, I'm looking at what was reported for last year in October, and there's no way we were at that number. I don't know where that number was derived, but it would have indicated we had 300 kids at swim school that month, and there's no way we did. So I'm not sure where those numbers are coming from, but I would expect a swaying growth in revenue. I mean, we're not talking about anything in terms of...
I'm just gonna, I'm trying to find the swim school numbers.
So are we still thinking 5,700, or are we, swim lesson program? Because that's where I'm at, right? Swim lessons on page 11, so.
Yeah, 5,700 is Skagit College, that's by contract.
I'm trying to go line item by line item here, so...
Yeah, I can't find it on the, on the budget.
All right. So the one here that's right after true aerobics, because that's where Alan, we, we had the discussion about the passes. Swim lesson program is expected to grow. There's no total revenue of 123,700, includes 5,700 from Skagit College for the swim instructor program at 1,900 per quarter. So the 23, 123,700 is for swim school?
A projection.
A projection.
Yeah, that includes Skagit.
Right, right, right.
What, if you took Skagit College, what would it do to those numbers?
It'd be 123,700 minus 5,700.
Oh, I see, so it's just a straight subtraction, yeah. Okay.
Right, so that's on, on the side, page two. If you go to page two, you can also, a little better visual. Thank you. It shows the revenue coming in underneath the levy for your swim lessons. for your swim lessons, that's swim school, is that the same thing? Swim lesson, swim school thing?
Yes.
Okay, so in that total, it's 125,950, it's a little, a little more so, and that's probably not too far off, I hope that that's...
This was based on changed assumptions, there was an addendum.
Raise the prices here of private lessons.
So this addendum raised this a little bit?
Yeah, this is raising...
Oh, this is based on raising the fees.
Raising fees.
The addendum with 12 for 13 points on there was impacted into this budget here, so the numbers that you see on the original assumptions are not going to match exactly what's on the chart.
Okay.
So 120, 125,900, that number was because there was a suggestion to raise the price of private lessons from 85 to $100 regardless of the number of kids in the lesson. So that was on that list of amended assumptions that I emailed out, and it starts on page seven.
Right, we'll get there, let's go through, let's go through, yeah, let's go through the original one first, then I'll go back to the, so where did we leave off here? Swim team revenue after Skagit, so includes N-WAC dues, revised down, downward due to lower registration.
Now, does this have the increase in fees that you were proposing?
No, did page two and three do, but not this page.
Not this page.
That's correct.
That's on page seven, that was, but we're not going to do it yet.
Can I just make a point that if we're going to get anything done, there's a lot of assumptions and bullet points here, are we going to go at them line by line?
We did that last time.
I know, that's why I'm saying we've already done it.
All right, yeah.
I don't remember doing this.
We did it last meeting.
We went through all of these, all of the revenue assumptions here, we talked about the last meeting.
And then you took that information and all those suggestions, and you put it into the revised addendum with the new assumptions, so I'm wondering if it, if there's anything on here that needs to be brought to our attention, or we should move on to the amended assumptions.
Well, I disagree with the whole dues increase now, and I'd really like to have a, like to have my feet on the ground when we start talking about it. So I'm, I'm not willing to skip over stuff, I prefer to hear where we are. If you think we can do this again by going to the addendum and saying all the data is in the addendum as well, I'm willing to do that.
I'm wondering if the bullet points for the addendum will cover your concerns.
Well, that's what I don't know.
And if not, we can go back, but it's hard to know through all those bullets, which of those are your concerns, or if you go through line by line, we'll be here all night.
I tend to agree with you, but I also want to do this properly, because I feel that this is really important.
But with this already, these...
I don't remember, so.
Well, we're going to take a couple minutes, we'll let Alan read through it, everybody read through it, and if you have things that come to light, then let's talk about it. So let's take about five minutes and go through the assumptions on page 11.
I regret these, my problem's not the, it's not the, the problem is that the assumptions behind a lot of this, and the emphasis on relying on a set of propositions which we've said we really don't like, and then taking a look at everything because of what it costs and saying, well, we could get rid of it because it would save us money, and saying that is not the purpose of a recreational district. A recreational district is to provide recreational programs to the best of our ability.
Okay, so I don't think that argument is going to be in any line item.
It's through all of them.
Right, it goes throughout all of them, so how do we fix the budget then? And we'll, we'll talk about it, let's, since, how are we going to fix the budget then without raising duties, Alan? What kind of creative ideas do we have then?
Yeah, I think that, that's where I'd like to get, but I'd like to make sure we're all on the same page when we start into that. I'm happy to go, if you want, to the addendum to the budget assumptions or wherever you want, but you've heard what I, what I'm saying about this, and if I come back and become difficult because, you said, you've already seen it, it's because I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay. All right, the addendum, then we'll go to the addendum on page seven then. And I tell you what, I have more clarification now, too.
I'd like to summarize what's on the chart real quick.
Sure, sure, go for it.
There are 10 bullet points there, the first three were ones I was given direction about at the last meeting, so I made those changes and reported back to you with a revised budget, and actually the first two, the third bullet point there was a comment, the first two were the ones I was given direction on. The next six were ones that Chairman Merrill called me about a week ago, a little over a week ago, and suggested, let's see what the budget would look like if you did those. And that was what you received as what I call the fourth pass budget, with those six items plugged in, and then the last item, the 10 bullet point there, about the 7% matching retirement program, and a couple of the staff that would decline that, that was the last item that essentially drove the, what I call the fifth pass budget, which you received just a couple of days ago, that left us $10,000 in the rest, so that was, that's where the 10 points came from.
So this is, can we look at the fourth? I'll tell you what, this week's been a little busy, last week, so.
Kurt, I'm going to interrupt, Alan was kind enough to find out, the voucher to the state auditor for the last time they came out and did the two years, was $6,883.37. Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't just a shot in the, yeah, $6,883.37 that the state, that the state come out and do that.
Okay. So, yeah. That's going to be...
That's ouch.
I would assume by the time they finish the audit and the invoice, those sales probably haven't been paid in 2014, so even though it's a 2013 expense, they won't get here until, you know...
They're finished now. They will, they will probably, they will voucher us, Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, they will bill us when they send us the finished report, which is what they've done, what they did with that one, and so we won't see that bill until 2014, so we need to budget for that.
Yep.
So at least, at least $6,883.37. Jesus. Kurt, I'm sorry I interrupted you, you were saying something.
Well, I was just saying it was, it's a little tough to keep up with, with all these passes, and so I wouldn't mind going through this addendum, these other bullet points that you all came up with, and look at that fourth pass and see what, how that affected the fourth pass to get us to 10,000, just 10,000.
All right, the first two, eliminate the travel pay for the N-WAC assistant coaches, we talked about that at the last meeting, anybody have further comment on that before we go to the next one?
So that's, that's just for assistants?
Assistant coaches.
That's travel salary.
Travel salary.
So the assumption that was in there, in the budget, within those budget assumptions, the original set, there was some coaching hours, remember we talked about coaches, a second coach attending meetings?
So that's paying them while they're in transit and at the meet, that type of thing?
Correct, and, and the consensus here was only pay the head coach, and if people want a second coach to attend and they want that salary to be paid, then somehow we need to establish a booster club or some other organization to compensate them, because it's not the district that can do that. Am I summarizing that?
Yeah, that was basically what we said.
So until a booster club is established, if...
If, we go that direction, right?
If the coach, if an assistant coach wants to go to a meet, it's on their own, is that what we're saying?
We can't, you, labor laws, you can't do that, you can't do that.
So I mean, they, they would be a spectator, essentially, that's why I mean...
If they go, if they show up and do any coaching, we have, you can't volunteer for something you get paid for, there's even labor laws about that, so you can't volunteer for something you get paid for, compensated for in a state of Washington, you know, that's, that's illegal in and of itself. So if they go, they could, even sitting, and I tell you what, you're going to find an assistant coach that shows up at a meet and doesn't text a parent or a kid, or doesn't talk to a kid after a swim, I mean, we're, we're setting ourselves up for trouble there, you know, so.
I just wanted to clarify.
But yeah, do not replace the bronze coach who resigned last month, we all agreed on that, Erin, when she left, right, we're not going to replace that position until the increase in the swim team members justifies it.
So that's, that's a good point, is where...
We do need to talk about the coaching situation as well.
Right, but we don't need to do that tonight, tonight is about the budget. So, all right, this is the fourth annual budget in a row without a major line item for facility reserve, we'd like to be able to do that, set aside a facility reserve with this budget, right now we have to figure out how we can balance it, let alone set aside money for the facility reserve.
We get a little perspective on that, last year's budget included planned expenses for the roof and for the furnace replacement, so essentially that was about $30,000 in lieu of putting a facility reserve in place, so that line there, I suppose, thinking about it now is not really true, we actually planned to spend that money, but Alan, I'm wondering if you could give us some perspective on, your first two years on the commission, there was $25,000 set aside in budget for that, and then the last two years on the commission, there was nothing there, do you remember the line of thinking about why it was that, you know, in this 30-year-old facility, you were not setting money aside?
Sure, I can tell you exactly what it was, nobody's in the middle of it, but I don't think it's going to help us with what we're dealing with right now.
Okay.
We have a capital expansion dream, we, we're trying to set a base sort of account so that we could get all of the preliminaries done on that and show the public that we were in fact committed to it through our budgeting, and so we went ahead and we did it as a conscious item, but, you know, I went through the old 2010 budget just because I was so horrified with what I saw on this 2014 one, and something has happened in between, I don't know what it is, but we're way out of whack, and, you know, I think, I'm usually not terribly conservative, but I think we've got to go and take a look back and see where we want to rejig this budget in a macro way, which is why I'm arguing about looking at the line items and trying to see, for example, salaries at the pool here, have increased, I think it's $80,000 in four years, that's, that's huge when we're taking a look at the expenditures, you know, I mean, they're just huge, they're big shifts there, and the number of programs has dropped dramatically in the last year, and yet we still have that many people.
How many programs have we lost in the last year?
I was just surprised when I went down to the 2010 budget and took a look at the running club, the soccer, the roller derby, you know, the running club was a major operation.
That was two years ago, though.
Well, this is 2010, it's about million...
Right, so, so we've, since then we lost the running club, roller derby we haven't had since I've been a teacher.
Do you still have the running club?
Huh?
Do you still have the running club?
We do have, we have a fitness club.
No, it's a fitness club.
Yeah, it's not the same, we're not spending as much on that as we did before, though, either, you know.
You're asking me to go through here and find this right away.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, city beach, we had costs for city beach and we had income from city beach.
We had no.
You know, but, I mean, there are four or five items here, there's the running club down there, and soccer, we had $8,000.
Kids love soccer, they pulled, yeah, okay, so, no, let me, let me address your point, though, please, kids love soccer, they pulled out, we couldn't do anything about that, they decided not to come back, because of Northwood B Soccer's so big, so they said they don't have, they don't get the draw here because of Northwood B Soccer. City beach, well, we can blame Dave, city employees sitting here.
Let's not blame anybody.
But city beach pulled out, city beach pulled out, so this, they pulled that, so...
The point is that we had a whole range of things that people were doing.
Right.
That were employees here.
Right.
That received money on an hourly basis or a salary basis, we've contracted, so we don't have those things to go, and yet our salary budget is huge compared to where it used to be.
So why are we paying so much more incrementally for salaries?
Exactly.
We have less expenditures, well, I don't think we, how much do we pay for kids love soccer?
We didn't pay for it.
Yeah, they paid for themselves.
Yes.
Yeah, so we didn't pay for that.
And we cut back charges.
And city beach, we got paid by the city to compensate us for the guards, if I recall correctly.
Right.
Okay, so that's two, we didn't really have extra, those were kind of a wash.
Well, see, they come out in revenue, and that's how come the revenue number looks so much better than it does in 2014, because those different programs are under revenue and under expenditures.
Okay.
But the thing is, the programs are there.
Right.
And that's what I'm trying to say, and so, you know, when I look at this shift in the budget itself, the overall shift, that's where, if we've got to balance a budget, that's really a soft spot that I feel we have to address. It's not the programs to the community, if we cut the two swim teams, for example, is sort of implicit, a lot of it explicit a couple of times in your arguments, what you're doing is cutting yet more services to the community, which is the essence of our job, it's to provide community services, you know, programs for kids. Let me back up one more, what did you say with this thing?
We're not cutting, we're just talking about cutting the team.
Look at the, look at the policy here, certainly there, where you say, you say, let me, let me, you know, what, what we have is statements in here, if we got rid of N-WAC and masters, we would be way ahead in our budget.
Okay, you think I advocate that, Alan?
Okay, okay, all right, stop.
You're not advocating that.
Stop, 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 stop.
I have never ever said that.
Both of you, both of you, stop.
I have never advocated that, Alan.
Both of you guys, stop, hey, we have said, and you have said it before, that we're going to continue N-WAC, all right?
Yes, that's good.
There, there's, there's nobody advocating getting rid of a program.
Okay, but there's...
All right?
Well, if a person says...
That's why the statements that get said just keeps getting repeated by people.
Yeah, that's right.
But it's not stated in here, where's it stated? Okay, stop, stop.
But I didn't read that part. Yes, I did, but you said it, you know, there's...
Stating a fact doesn't mean I'm in favor of it, Alan, come on.
Stating.
Okay, so what, looking at the assumptions.
Yes.
Looking at the assumptions.
You know what?
Okay, stop, we're, we're going to...
I'm not going to stop, I want to say something, if this can't continue in a professional way, God, this is how the evaluation was, come on, you guys, if we can't get along just for a moment, it's ridiculous. Thanks, Sean.
I agree, I'll take a deep breath.
Looking at the assumptions, private party lesson rate from 85 to 100, okay, made that suggestion after talking to Bill, right now it's 85 for a single student and 100 for two students or more. If you go to 100 per student, that means like if somebody comes with three or four students, they still pay $100, right, say, I've got three kids, I told them, but I have three kids.
Well, paying for the instructor's time.
You're paying for the instructor's time, right? So if that instructor wants to teach one child or three child, children, it doesn't matter, you're paying for that instructor's time in the water, yes, sir, go for it, so that's why I made that suggestion. Now I want to hear what you guys have to say.
And that would be fine, however, there's nothing in here that would say, that would limit the number of kids or limit them to the same individual group, for example, if we're paying for the instructor's time, how many kids can that instructor teach?
What does WSI say? I'm sure WSI has to have something, I, I matter of fact, are we sure it's six? So there you go, it would be up to six.
Related, unrelated, it doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter, we're paying for the instructor's time there, and so that's my suggestion to raise that.
So, so people would get together if they had six kids and say, we'd like your instructor to teach our kids.
Why not? You're paying for the instructor, you're paying for the, the hourly rate for that instructor and the pool water time, right? So why not?
The only problem that I would see practically is what happens if the kids are at different levels of expertise.
That's up to the instructor.
If the instructor commits themselves to...
Exactly, if the instructor commits themselves to that, that's up to that instructor. It's a private lesson, we don't oversee it, to my own knowledge, we don't oversee it, our aquatics director, our swim, you know, our swim instructors, it's not falling under our purview, it's one of the...
It's a seller, they're paid by our, our payroll.
Okay.
They're on an hourly rate.
Right.
I'm not sure I'd, I'd find, we find a lot of private instructors here that would accept six kids, you know, you can, you can make a policy right now that it's a maximum of three kids.
Right, we could do that.
If you want to do that, that's fine.
That was, that was where that assumption came from.
Yes, sir.
Why not raise it 15 bucks? Hasn't gone up since 2006, our rates, as we know, and we've talked about this, and Alan, I know you keep shaking your head and you don't like it, but I'm saying, hey, fiscally, we can't keep running the pool on the backs of the taxpayer, eventually we've got to look at, hey, are we going to increase dues for the people that use the facilities, all right? And if you don't agree, that's why there's five of us, all right, that's why, I mean, seriously, that's, that's why there's five of us, you know, one person's idea doesn't mean it's a go, that's the great thing about having five of us, you know, since 2006, we haven't raised the dues, yet we keep coming back for taxes from the community, so I'm saying, wait a minute, you ask in one hand, my dad used to say this to me as a kid, you ask for one hand, what's the piece you're going to say, and you defecate in the other, one hand fills up quicker than the other hand, okay? So by asking people to pay taxes, we're doing something in one hand, and we're not doing anything in the other hand, it's still at the same place it was in 2006, one hand's heavier than the other right now, so how do we level out that scale? That's all I'm suggesting, and that's why there's five of us to decide if that's the direction we want to go, or do we want, again, say, we're not going to raise dues?
Should I ask to vote?
I'm not asking for vote, I'm, I'm putting ideas out there, I, I can't make a motion, no man, you can't do that.
I don't get to vote, so.
So...
Well, and I guess the thing is, how much can we raise the dues and keep the numbers up?
Yeah, exactly.
Without offending people, you know, I mean, everybody, I think, would be okay with some kind of percentage every year, just almost like a cost of living adjustment, maybe that's the way to go.
So what's, what's the right way to do that? Because we, if we're going to do that, we need to decide that before we even build assumptions for a budget.
Yeah.
You know, that's the honest to God truth, if we, if we go to do, raise anything, we have to, we as a group need to decide that before we can build anything. And I, and so, so by me talking to Bill, I said, hey, we've got to change some things, that's the way I see it, Alan sees it differently, we're looking at things through different sides, it's good, that's what it's supposed to be about, fuck people, that's a good point.
Well, and you have to be concerned that if the levy doesn't pass, could the fees we establish support the facility and the, at least basic construction?
No, you would have a second look. That would be a whole other conversation. So, based on what you're saying, I see that you've kind of looked at the different areas of raising here and there. Has anyone looked at just doing a percentage over the, the whole board of all programs? Two percent, three percent increase in fees all over instead of looking at individual programs?
That's what the 10% increase was across, and that's why, uh, let's see, page, I think it's starting at the bottom of page eight, flowing through page 10.
Right. But, but, but you're talking about additional rate.
This represented 10% across the board. And Sean and I then talked about what the budget would look like if we then took the N-WAC and Masters dues and raised it 15.
Okay. So, that's an addition.
Because they never raised since 2006, is that right?
Right.
Nor me either.
Right. None of them did.
Okay.
Is that?
Why 15 for N-WAC and Masters?
Because we're certainly, in my reasoning behind that, my reasoning was, when I looked at the program, to me, it's worth it. To me, and, and I'll tell you, and speaking as a swim dad, to me, 15%, I'm sitting here going, for what it does for my child, I'm willing to pay it. Tell you straight up. Now, I can pay it. That doesn't mean it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, I know. At least two people on the Masters that are sitting at General Times because they can't afford the $50.
There you go. But, you know what? And that's where it come down to, you know, where do we draw the line? And that's why there's five of us. So, that, that's why I floated it out, you know? But I floated it out there because we've got to start the discussion.
Well, I appreciate each other's time to put those things in there because we have to have some suggestions to go on. We still have $12,000 more to do, so.
So, do we want to look at dues?
Yes, we do. I guess we can.
So, Kirk, what you said, two or three percent, I mean, I don't know if two or three percent after, we're close, we're eight years now, right? 2006, 2014, this would be for 2014. That would be after eight years, two percent. And I feel like I'm getting a colon, I'm still active duty in military. Um, two or three percent after eight years, I, I think personally, I, that's the, just, that's a drop in the bucket. I was looking for the right term, sorry. I, I think we need to initially go a little higher and then maybe after that, settle down a little bit more, but.
So, you're thinking more, maybe a 5% across the board versus 10?
Okay.
Of course, that's not going to get us where.
What do I pay a month for, uh, Kirk, for gold? My child swims gold. What do I pay a month? Sixty?
It's on page 10.
10. So, if I look.
Clearly, 65.
65.
And at a 15% increase, you pay $70.
75.
A year?
A year. No, a month.
That's 15%.
Wow, that's expensive.
So, that, that's a 15%.
You're making 15, just right.
Yeah, so, a lot less than comparable programs on.
A month.
For, for.
That's.
Six days a week.
And my kid swims six days a week on.
It's cheaper still in town.
If you look at that, divide that by 30, that's, uh, what is that?
Kid pays $500 to play football, don't they?
Yeah.
For playing, and they have to go to a camp, last for two months.
Yeah, that's, that's really for competitive sports. And we want to have a competitive team, and that's my point. If we're doing a rec team, I, I'm all about having cheap dues because then we're not trying to produce athletes. But if you look at competitively, if my, if I look at what Ashley would pay as a, my, my kid would pay swimming gold compared to what my kid's going to pay for Northwood Beach Soccer, playing select soccer, I'm getting a hell of a deal. So, to me, the 15% was worth it. Now, like I said, I can afford that. So, that's not a fair, you know, maybe that's not a fair comparison. But if you look at what they pay outside, I think that's nothing. So, where do we, where do we, as a group, I've thrown out 15, what do you guys think is a good idea, if you don't like 15?
Can I ask you, what's the other column? There's two columns.
That's resident and non-resident. Professor on the left, non-resident on the right.
You can't, if you're going to raise everybody else's dues 10, 10% to do other activities, you can't go less than 10%. You can't.
Right.
I mean, it's just, uh, I, I don't see where you could stand on that. You know, I mean, uh, you know, I'll tell you what, and I don't know if you guys have talked to people who are non-swimmers in the community. Or maybe who have kids that aren't part of the swim team that do other programs. Those, those people, and we've been told the community's watching us. I guarantee you, they're watching that. That concerns them. You can come in here for $65 and you can swim, you know, six days a week. You can come here anytime you want, outside of that, still swim for free. Yet, these kids taking swim lessons? Eight half-hour sessions, half the time they're sitting there waiting on the instructor? It's $40, I believe. Where's the balance there? You know, for those people, I think you really have to raise them. I mean, if we're going to raise, and you know, you have to raise it at some point in time. It would be great if everything was free. I wish I lived in a society like that. But you know what? That's not realistic. If we're going to raise the fees of swim school and other activities 10%, you have no choice but to raise N-WAC 10%, I feel. You know, hey, you know what? I hate it, man. You know, because there's going to be somebody out there that, that, that creates a, a problem for. And I tell you, back to this booster club, you know, it is a great idea, and yet, nobody wants to run with it. You know? Uh, because at, at a point like that, a booster club could step in and help people who are financially strapped. You know, you don't, you don't want to see anybody that, that their kid can't do what they love to do. I get that. But here we are trying to build a budget. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm agreeing.
No, go ahead.
Okay, my big problem is, I don't, 10%, whatever. If you raise it 10%, and if the enrollment drops 10%, you're no further ahead.
Right, that's true. That's, and that's what Kirk was saying earlier. We've got to find that happy medium. Right? I threw a ballpark figure out there to get the ball rolling. We've obviously gotten the ball rolling, so let's figure out where we want to go with this.
I guess a prior question for me is, um, the viability of the programs. Um, if you add something that's stuttering for whatever reason, um, and if you up the hurdle for it, then in fact, if it's weak, it's going to drop more. Um, and I, on the dollars and 10% so much, that's fine. If you could guarantee that everybody's going to be there. I don't think everybody's going to be there. I think people are going to, um, find other things to do. And as I said, my problem is, because the Masters crowd is so small, when I see two people that I knew that used to swim with me, uh, swimming in regular time, I say, why don't you come to the Masters? Well, actually, we can't afford it because, so I can just swim with the regular pass.
Okay.
Because that 20 bucks makes that much difference to them.
But the, the beauty thing, the beauty here is, it's not, where do we draw the line? We have to maintain the facility, right?
But that's where I would like to look at the big ones in the budget, like salary, and see if we could take $30,000 off of the salary. How can we justify to more people, um, you know, for wages and salary? And then come back to this and see how to fine-tune it. Because all we're doing is fine-tuning. We're playing really on the margins here. There's not a lot of money when we talk 10% from the fees fees.
Sure.
I wish it was a bigger amount of money because I feel we're getting somewhere. But if we're talking $100,000, we're talking about a massive cut. And I think that your comment on the Medicare was exceedingly, or not Medicare, that's a Canadian term, but the health insurance was very generous in the sense of cutting it back so it's not a platinum plan, but something less. I mean, that's making a big difference. That's a bigger difference than all the change that will come from 10% increase.
Shaun's six points there.
Yeah.
No, but when I plugged it in, it was, it came out to $36,000 or $38,000 savings.
And how, how much was it on Medicare or on the health insurance?
Our agent called me today to say that, uh, to tell me again that Group Health is not going to fit our plan, and she wanted a full census of all 63 people on this staff, even the part timers, before they could bid the four of us that would be on the program. So, here on county for the last three weeks, I'm getting numbers from her, and she called me today at this. So, I expect to see actual numbers next week. And, you know, it, it turns out to be that the assumption here was that it was $800 per person per month, and that we would do those percentages of each person and how that would affect the budget. So, if it's not $800, you know, if it's more or it's less, then we have, so we've got no more nebulous and other people who are holding our program the rest of the time to say, I agree.
It's the same thing, though. If you're cutting, if you're adding fees to keep off some options, and you're saying we don't want to pay them, if we keep cutting back salary, cutting back benefits and cutting back all these different things for employees, the morale right now is in a good spot. I feel like I've heard positive feedback. If we cut too much there, we're also going to start seeing, um, a different quality in, in this staff here. So, I wouldn't want to cut back too much either. And, and what I hear that he said is he wasn't part of this discussion until he referred our meeting tide. And I'm supportive of that and moving on. But I think you have to be careful about pulling back too much on some of these items because right now, we have a very good place. We're in a place to grow. We have happy staff, we're, we have trained staff that we've invested in. Yeah, but that's coming. We've, we, we.
We, we, we keep saying the programs, but the programs we lost weren't really ours to lose any.
And we haven't been spending time on looking at what we can do as a commission to en- enhance the community and do new programs. We have been dealing with the FIBA a bunch of negativity for the past year, reactively every single meeting. I think the year ahead, you guys have a good opportunity to increase the progress here at the district.
I agree.
Which brings revenue and increases morale in the community and the staff, so.
So, let's look at expenses real quick. Since we can't agree on raising dues, and it's, as you just said, it's minimal.
Don't, don't, I don't say we're not agreeing. What I'm saying is that these are sliding scales. And if you feel secure about those numbers, in fact, they may evaporate on us. And I'm worried about that.
Yeah, we're tabling it till later. Let's move on expenses. So, let's look at expenses on page 12, please.
You go to the original assumption, right?
Um, on page 12. But is that, is that the original assumptions or is, where's the other ones? And do they change, really? No, I'm looking at the assumptions on page 12.
Okay, we, we sort of slid over page eight.
What do you got on page eight, Alan?
Uh, based on patron and taxpayer comment, I respectfully, I respectfully strongly recommend the following largely symbolic gestures. Take away current privilege of Masters dues and fee times. And we've talked about that with the fees. They were not free times.
Right, they're not free times.
Uh, and same thing goes for returning seniors. And, um, I'm not sure about making sure you collect bills on time, how that plays fits there, but that's fine. Lots of things I don't know anything about.
I think that's, it was.
So, we've got rid of those.
Well, we're not getting rid of getting, having people, no.
Paying on time, right?
Right, those are suggestions that were brought up.
Apparently, seniors aren't paying anything.
Right. And we, we didn't have any return.
Three of them.
It's a, right, it's a minimal thing. It's a minimal thing. But don't you think there should be a policy that a person walks into this pool building and gets in the water using coached time, that they should be paying for that?
Well, we talked about that and voted on that as a commission.
Yeah.
Um, and.
No, I, no, later.
No, it was because of the, uh, importance of the sort of continuation for swimmers that they saw that there were people that had gone on and were doing things, weren't coming back. So, they were in fact providing a service to the community. And that was in the debate we were talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, but if you want to go to page 12, those are at least the points that I want to make clear.
Okay. Expenses, let's look at expenses real quick. Uh, director, salary, and then that is the aquatic director. And this is something, what, what did we pay for the two jobs she did last year separately? $33,000?
Um, she was around 33, yeah. Well, $16 an hour, which if she works 40 hours a week, which she was not recording 40, if she was, it'd be around 33.5, I think. Right in that range? I guess. Yeah, she didn't work the entire year. She wasn't in that job until, I believe, first March.
33,280.
You got it? Thank you, Sean. So, it'll be 33,280. I got a hard time making another salaried full-time position when we're talking about raising dues everywhere else and cutting things. I just don't think that's the right thing to do. I just don't think that's the right thing to do.
I actually would agree with you on that. My point, I'm thinking it should be, I'm not sure why we have pool operator in the salary position, aren't they, what do they make per hour? I mean, just say, because he's salary too, right?
Fifteen dollar, is what it says that they would be paid for aquatic director if it weren't salary. If there was a question.
You talking about Matt, the maintenance guy?
Yeah.
There's two positions in there, actually. That's Matt on salary, and then that's Stephanie who covers for him on the weekends.
I almost think, and I always have an issue with salary for folks that are, because it puts them in a non-exempt status, or an exempt status, I'm sorry. In that, you know, you can either say, well, you'll be here because you're paid salary and, you know, you make sixteen dollars an hour if you calculate it out, but you can really take advantage of a person if they're on salary. And they're not getting any overtime, they're putting in tons of hours. It's good for them because then they have a consistent income or they don't have to punch the clock. But same time, I've also seen it abused by the people who are on salary because they don't show up, or they, you know, they come when they feel like it, or they come when they need to, and then they, you know, but there's no accountability. For you as the director and for Bill Patterson, head coach, salaries are, I think, a great idea. And I think one of you should always be here, really, during normal working hours, but...
But why would you have the head coach always be here as opposed to somebody like the aquatic director who's...
Because he's more of a...
He's managing people from 5:30 in the morning until 10 o'clock at night every day.
Well, the question is how much of that could be folded in your job? Because this aquatics director was not in existence this way. There was a person that sort of was a senior lifeguard that took over the scheduling function, and that's what that job was on that side. The rest of it was done by the director, maybe in your position. I like Erica, and I'm not in any way critical of the energy and the amount of work she puts in, but I was looking at the 2010 budget, looking at this proposed one, and our budget is seventy thousand dollars in salaries and wages higher than it was in 2010.
Which budget are you looking at?
So 2014, off and loss.
The one you just got tonight?
Fourth of November, 2013 is the page. It's the number up in the corner. No, because I had to tab it at home so I could work on it. It wasn't working on tonight. That'd be really good if I could do it all that fast.
The one that I emailed out two days ago?
Eleven, yeah.
Fifty pounds.
Yeah, the fourth, I don't know if it's, on, the fourth of November is the date up in the left-hand corner.
Okay, and you looked at the one that says November 12?
Oh, undoubtedly did, but I did my work on this one. And what I'm trying to say is that I didn't see any big difference in numbers when I went through them all. And this one here, I put beside the 2010 one, and the difference is seventy thousand dollars by the looks of it, just on salary and wages, not counting benefits and everything else. And so that when I look at your whole set of things here on page 12 and 13, it seems to me that that's minutiae. The question is, how much can we afford to have that block go up or down? And what's reasonable? And you're saying that morale is good, Lori. You know, they're doing pretty well in a time where a lot of the people aren't doing very well if you've got that big an increase in salary. And as I say, I have nothing against the people involved. In fact, I wish someone could do it, to sound like Steve. But if you haven't got the money, you've got to do something you don't like. And so that, to me, that is the debate. That's the question. And then, you know, a lot of the stuff is targeted, it seems to me, because maybe of my knowledge, on the head coach and the N-LAW crowd and the amount of money that's going into it. But I'm not sure if that's the best return, and I've said that a thousand times. But still, the problem of how to cut down that number on salary, at least for one year, in other words, delay the nice things like an aquatic director if we can get the revenue up. But for the 2014 budget, there's no way I can justify that type of an increase in that block, in that line item, you know. So let's set my...
Let's look at that as a quick look.
You delay the aquatic director and you're only going to save a couple thousand dollars.
Well, maybe, maybe the whole position should be cut back or rethought. What I would do is I would vote some sort of, and I don't know what it is, some sort of a reduction for salaries, which will set a quota on it, and then it's your job to figure out how it's best put together, because that's administration. It's our job to take a look at the budget and make sure that we're doing this responsibly for the public and the long-term tradition of the commission. And it's not for you to tell us what the public is. It's for you to give advice.
When I hear what the public says to me, it's my responsibility to...
Give us advice, but you cannot tell us. That's our job.
I'm not instructing you. I'm very clearly asking for your decision.
Well, yeah, that would be what I would see as a comfortable decision.
I do make recommendations, that's why.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's what I'm saying.
So, go ahead, Steve. So the aquatic director, and as Alan said, I think we all agree she's, Erica's been doing a very good job. But an aquatic director, I can't make a motion, so...
Well, no, let's talk a little more.
All right.
Because I think Alan hit on a good point there is the salaries and wages are, bottom line, that number is too high. It's just too high.
So you're saying that if we reduce the fees today as a group, it needs to be cut about thirty thousand dollars, let it decide.
Yeah, ten percent.
If you think it's more important and then priority have a full-term director, cut somebody else.
There you go. He can figure, then he can figure out who he wants to go on salary.
If he knows, then we know where it fits.
And the, you know, we had a discussion once, we were talking about the costs of, again, the swim teams, because I guess I remember that stuff better. But if there are two guards in the pool plus the coach's certified guard, and we only need one guard at that time, it'd be a set of hours that could be cut out, so that in fact we could sort of...
Do we need guards on deck when the pool, when there's teams on deck?
Well, you've got to have at least one, I think, but I don't know what the rule is. I think there have to be two people, but if a certain coach is certain...
There's never a guard.
No, well, there is with masters. We have people running around.
Yeah, there's, because...
Two people running around.
Yeah, there's last one, and we actually have two coaches here. We have two coaches here, that's why. We've got two, we've got two lifeguards. You're correct.
You know, we have this 1:30 time that's open for people to come and rent. A lot of times it's not taken. So if there's nobody on schedule taking that 1:30 time, and it's a Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, as of this week, we started dropping one guard a day.
And that's, that's the type of thing that you would know. You know, it would be a matter of then trying to see how to make the budget work.
Totally. I'd love to bring up one thing. I mean, you mentioned this like a month ago. Actually, I think you had a lot about each other. Before we could really look at a budget accurately, it would have been nice to have, you know, the way forward meeting we were talking about, to where we actually had a mission statement, to where we know what's going on. What are the, what are those programs this community can't do without? What, you know what? I think if you ask most people, swim instruction is the number one program in this district. We want our kids to learn to swim so they don't drown. That is something pretty much everybody in this community can agree with, right? And in one respect, you're, we're paying fifty thousand dollars for a coach, but yet we're arguing over two thousand dollars for an aquatics director, because that's really what it's going to be, right? Two thousand...
Plus all the fringe benefits, plus six...
Seven hundred and twenty dollars. Well, then that's potato potato because they both are going to have benefits, right?
But go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
The point is, it's like, I think if you ask most people, the one program we can't do without as a community is swim instruction. That is it. I think after that, you start to look at other things. Family swim time, where families can come and, you know, they can, they can exercise together, play together, just have fun. And then you start getting into all these other things. Erica's job, I mean, when you really look at it, we have decided, and why it's, it's very important to this community, and we're willing to pay a coach fifty thousand dollars to coach those kids. We did it with Neil. We're doing it with Bill. But yet, here's this aquatics director who is handling what most of us would see is that one program that a pool is really about. If you want to talk about levies, when you've talked to people who vote for it, the one thing they know you can't do without is a pool where kids can learn to swim, that is it, man. That is the biggest thing a pool is here for, in my opinion only. So what I think when we look at her, we have to look at the responsibility that she has. This is a program that's essential to this community.
But I think what we're saying here too, and what Alan's saying is, is how we manage the programs. Does it need a full-time director? Can we have somebody who, one person who's in charge of swim school, and then another senior guard or something else, throwing a different option out there, who's in charge of lifeguards? And then we have two different people, and we're not paying the salary, the benefits, the retirement, and the medical from one person doing both. And that is what, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, that's what Alan's saying, and Lori's saying, hey, we give Bill, hey, this is how much you got in salary and wages, you go forth and make it happen, brother.
Well, I'll tell you, you've got to raise the people as part-time to do that job and not have to pay the medical.
They only need to be working twenty-five or thirty hours a week.
But we did it with a bigger school. We had a bigger swim school than we have now. You know, and they would line up the place there before you guys...
They could sign up online.
I know that. I know that. But the thing is that they were...
They were doing it online, so they don't have to line up outside the door.
And it's, so I think we're just getting too far in the weeds. Kurt said they're an idea, but it's his job, he's more intimate with it. He understands the importance of what the jobs are. We need to decide on what needs to be cut, need, not, I think nobody wants to cut, but it has to be cut from somewhere, if this makes sense. Let's, somebody make a motion and get on with it.
If, you know, if that's, if that's how you want to do it, I'll find it somewhere. But there's a couple of things that I can tell you. One is that there would definitely be more than forty hours a week combined between those two positions if we decide not to, not to have an aquatic director at this point. And if she stays on hourly, she's going to be booking thirty-five to forty hours a week doing both jobs.
Then you'll have to reorganize. Then you'll have to reorganize.
So the head guard can't be...
Saying reorganizing is going to lose the efficiencies, because right now, she supervises those, those two groups overlapped like crazy.
I understand.
You know, there's probably, I'm throwing numbers out here, there's probably thirty people working under Erica's supervision, thirty to thirty-five, and probably five or six are swim instructors who aren't also lifeguards. And probably ten of them are lifeguards who are not also swim instructors. She supervises that whole crew, the training, the discipline, the scheduling. Part of the problem we are having, the reason, if you remember, a year ago, we were, a year and a half ago, we were paying tremendous amounts of overtime, because when I got here, the system was, we've got one person scheduling swim instructors, we've got another person scheduling lifeguards. They were both working part-time, never saw each other, never talked to each other about how many hours these kids were working. Pretty soon, we've got kids booking fifty, fifty-five hours a week, and by the way, not getting paid time and a half at that time, so we had to go back and fix that. So it was a, you know, it becomes a major issue if you don't have the same person managing those two groups. And, you know, Erica realizes right now that she, in that position, may end up not getting this salary thing. And I don't think it's going to anger her, I don't think it's going to, you know, make her want to leave. But, you know, Sean asked me last meeting, what does this district get out of putting this person into a salaried position? Take the individual out of it for a second and look at what this job does. And one of the things it does is it makes that position higher value to somebody that wants to work there, whether it's Erica, the person that's in it right now, or if Erica leaves and goes somewhere else, it enhances our ability to hire a qualified person to fill those shoes. So that is, it not only enhances efficiency for the district, but it enhances our ability to recruit somebody going into that spot.
I agree with you, and I hope that you can make it work. My question is, can you, can you make that work and cut somewhere else?
Possible.
Look, I'd like to, if we can, can move from the aquatic director firm, and I'd like to talk about the team admin. What other, do we have any other program that has its own separating receiving and administration? I mean, who does the, who does the receiving, the auditing for swim school, for lap swims, for pool rentals, for everything else? Could that person not also handle?
The cashier does that. Some of the other things Nicole does, of course, as you know, team unify is a separate program that manages all the cash functions. And there are swim meet, oh, there are away swim meet dues that she has to deal with. There is things like, you know, just that clothing order go out. She makes sure that those things get entered and invoiced through team unify, and that money then gets transferred over into, into the district when it's paid, and all those accounting pieces are done. So there's, there is a larger piece of work that's specifically focused on N-LAW. There's, you know, masters. I'm going to throw a number out here. She's probably not been working that many hours. That would indicate, which we gave her ten thousand dollars. She's, I'm pretty sure she's not working that many hours. In fact, we've got it, budget versus actual right here. Let's see what she's done so far this year.
What page are you on there?
I'm on this, this document here that's extra one, so you're going to be on the third page.
Page three, or?
Uh, pick the cover, cover page, and then three more beyond that. Team admin, she's budgeted for eight thousand dollars here today, she's going to work forty-seven hundred dollars a week. So, no, we could probably knock that number back if we could, call it eight thousand instead.
And so, and so then she could do those things which are specific to team unify, but some of that function could still fall on cashier?
A lot of it does right now, anyway, because they're the ones that receive the money. They recorded on a sheet, Nicole, that they got the money, so basically Kurt, she doesn't handle the money. All she does is do the accounting for the team.
Sure. And as I go down through this, I think, okay, you know, we've already established that, that the swim teams and masters, the swim teams including masters is a program of the North Bay Park Recreation District. It's not its own separate entity, so why does it have so much specific staff for it? When some of that could fall back upon other staff that we have?
The specific staff...
I mean, coaches aside, obviously, you're going to have coaches, so get past the coaches you have as team admin. And that's what I was supposed to say.
Yeah, when did, when it went from volunteer to full-time, what was the impetus there? Because obviously it didn't work.
Craig, Craig put that position into cashiers.
Okay.
Even though there was a ton of time that was being worked, that was devoted specifically to the team. So in order to cost this out properly, when I, when I put this year's budget together, I created a new line item.
Right.
So as you remember, a year ago, the budget that you guys voted in, got that line item.
But before you got here, though, that was, you were already paying for a team treasurer, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, for three years, I think it was July on nine...
So does anybody know what the impetus was for us to go from a volunteer treasurer to a paid treasurer?
I don't know. I just know that it sounds like, I know the cashiers did everything out there, and then all of a sudden we got this team admin, which makes it look like it's just the team. But I think what you're talking about is putting together functions. And I think that's what's going to have to happen, if salaries are going to go down. The salary line item.
I'm just going to say again that I think we're getting in the weeds. I think of this as a bigger picture, the county commissioners, and they looked at each one of our jobs. We can't presume to know the importance of all these pools' jobs and the functions they have at this district. That's not our job. Our job is to look at the budget, not line item by line item. It's the appreciation line item, but we have to make hard decisions, and then he has a hard decision of figuring out what to do with the money that we think we have to cut. So can we focus on that?
Okay, so levies we're not going to change, right? Let's look at the revenues. Revenues we're not going to change on the first page, so let's go to the expenses. And we'll use the assumption expenses on, just as a guide, and a guide only, on page, let's see where the expenses start here. On page three, is that, yes, right?
We're looking at the...
I'm on page three.
The most recent, okay. And so we just look at salaries and wages.
Salaries and wages right now is, and this is fifty-three, eight, seventy-eight. That's not, that's January to December fourteenth.
It's the full year salary, five thirty-four.
Five thirty-four, eight seventy-eight, is that correct? Everybody?
We're on page three on minutes for tonight.
It's just the first page.
Oh, it's on the backside. Yes, sir. That's the line item we're talking about addressing there.
So what is our bottom line? I mean, we're in the hole right now, ten thousand, basically, with this budget as it is.
And if we add in sixty-eight hundred for audit, I'd call it seventeen.
Yeah, but we don't put that in salaries, do we?
No, no, we're just saying, Kurt asked how much we're in the hole with this, with this budget. So the budget we're looking at, we're ten thousand, sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand in the hole, roughly.
Okay. The budget for salaries and wages, the comparable one in 2010 was four hundred and sixty-five thousand. So it's up. Seventy? Seventy thousand.
What about doing it by percentage? What about raising the fees, ten percent?
That might be the, we're not, it's almost equitable. I'm not quite sure.
Increase to that amount, ten percent. That's fifty-three thousand.
You mean, the five thirty-four, eight seventy-eight, or ten percent?
Yep.
Could go down fifty-three. Yeah, I'd definitely take a chunk.
In funding universities, one of the things that we did was exactly that device, we would increase the fees for universities by the same amount as they would increase the fees to students.
It sounds...
Well, okay, that's a possibility. I think it's, and that might include benefits, or are benefits going to be fixed, costs?
That's where, I think, I think the whole thing has to be included, like, all the way down to payroll benefits. How far down do we go here?
Well, there's going to be certain, certain people in there are going to be affected like that. You're not going to be able to take ten percent off of the director, you're not going to be able to take ten percent off the head coach, well, under contract.
No, no, but we're not doing that. All you're doing is you're taking the total number at the end somewhere, whichever one, whether it's five thirty-four or something else which is cumulative of the whole thing, and dropping some ten percent.
We have to make it as Megan.
Curtis is the head coach now, and Chelsea Steele is assistant. So we do have two of them.
What does this do to be turned into the county? Twenty-sixth.
Last day of the month.
Last day of the month.
Yeah, I guess the last day's on a weekend, so it's actually...
Yeah, right before Thanksgiving. Oh, so we can get away with it some first. All I'm, all I'm thinking is, we don't have to kill ourselves tonight, and I don't want to make bad decisions.
No.
That's, you know.
Yeah.
I just, and I'm sorry, I just, I got behind the gun this week to be able to really look at this, and I would like your numbers, too, just so I can see for thirteen.
Yeah.
And I think a couple items that concern me coming forward next year is going to be the legal fees, because they've gone up incrementally for the last three years, pretty steadily, and hopefully they won't again, but they may. So that's, and I've been harping on this reserve account. I think we need to keep that at least a hundred thousand sitting there for emergency or whatever.
We just took twenty-five out of it this past month. You might have seen that in the report. Did you see that report I sent you?
No.
You asked for the report.
Did you get it to me? I have...
I did get it from Tony, and I thought I'd send it to you, but I guess not.
Okay.
So it's seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, so we got to get that back up. Is there, I mean, I don't care, but we need to...
I have a plan for replacing it. We're in, we're in straits right now that are not good. So, and as Lori said, you know, if you, if, you know, if you want to look at quitting twenty-five thousand dollars back in next month as part of a facility reserve plan, then all of a sudden we're not seventeen thousand in the hole, we're forty-two in the hole.
So we would do that fourteen, try to get it?
I would like to see, but I haven't seen a way that we can do it.
Alan, I'd like to make a suggestion. Lori, you know, ten percent's too big, looking at the number, but I think a five percent reduction is twenty-six thousand seven hundred. And if we're taking a look at the amount that we're short, if you reduce that line, five, seven, six, two, oh, ten, salary and wages by five percent, and make that a challenge, 5%, um, and make that a challenge, that gets us pretty close, um, to what you're talking about, numbers, and I will go along in return for the 10% increase in fees. Don't see, because, and that's twice as big as the cut.
I'm okay there, Alan, but I don't know, going and looking at some of these other line items, uh...
Well, I'm not just thinking this all, but I'm just trying to get past this one step to get us along the way.
Well, that's a, that's a good suggestion.
As an idea, yeah, and then, no, keep going, I'm sorry, Alan.
Well, that's salaries and wages, so assuming the 10%, no, 5% cut there, so let's just keep going, looking at this thing.
So we're proposing a 5% cut in salary and wages?
Which is $26,700.
Okay.
And puts that line item, 508,134.
5762011.
Down to 508, 508134.
Okay, so next would be...
Do you mention?
I, I think we're just sort of keeping together what we do.
Yeah, just making notes.
So 5% there, I got it down in red, so next is gonna be...
Just so that you understand, that's gonna be pretty tough to deal with.
Yep.
I realize that's my job, and that's what I get paid for, once again, like I said, for all you all are volunteers, and I'm the only one getting paid to sit here, um, so that's my job, and if you lay that on me, then I'll find a way.
I recall that we just voted to increase salaries for lock guards that don't wanna go.
It was, it was, split this topic.
Okay, 57620, payroll benefits, we can't really touch, correct?
That will, if we reduce salary and wages, it will reduce the line item, uh...
And payroll taxes.
This thing, yeah, that's, yes, there it is.
57620.12.
$74,000, that'll go down by 5%.
So that'll go down 5%, but that, that's in direct correlation.
Eight thousand, seven hundred.
Okay. Personnel benefits, 32,940.
So this is where you were talking about the medical, if we, I think the county used to, I'm not sure if they do anymore, it was a 15,85 split, uh, county paid 85, um, and people paid 15.
For employees, what about dependents?
Uh, across the board.
Same thing.
Yeah, so...
The assumption...
I don't know if that's still the case, I think they have a fixed amount now that they pay, and then anything over that, the employees gotta pick up, but they have a lot of different plans too, you know, high deductibles and house savings, and, but I don't know if we're gonna...
The amended plan, or the, the addendum to the budget assumptions on page seven there, um, the suggestion was to go 10 and 90 for employees, maybe 50/50 for dependents. Under that scenario is where I spoke with the, myself and the 300 people that, that, you know, would be on the plan and got those numbers there that I was assuming, and that's how we dropped it from 76,000 to 75,000.
Oh, you know, it's, government's a morass in many ways, but, you know, what you're saying, I, I'm wondering if it would be possible for another year to chat to, like, the county or, you know, the city, or some group that has a medical plan, to see if we could take our small little group and combine it so that in fact we got their rates and they had the stability and insurance that goes with just adding another three people to a bigger crowd, and we might find that saves money.
It may be possible, but in my, in my experience, looking at industry associations and...
Yeah, but this is public sector, this is really...
The city can do it.
I will look into it, but I've never seen a plan that actually combined two employers, two separate employers.
I, I sent you a question today, um, who do we pool with? Do we pool with anybody? The Association of Washington Cities has an associate program, it would be $500 to the district to become a member of that program, but you do get the insurance pooling benefit, and I have the insurance costs for the Association of Washington Cities, it's exactly what the City of Carver does, you know, because you asked, specifically you asked me to provide information on the high deductible health care plan.
Yeah, I didn't see that, did you know that today?
No, I just asked you the question.
Oh.
Who do we pool, or who's our carrier, I think, and...
Our carrier has been proved out, they're gonna not cover us for next year.
But we've been going through an agent to get there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, your fault, coverage fair.
Yeah. Um, the Association of Washington Cities self-insures, you know, I've got the rates right here, might be something to look into.
How does it compare with what we're being quoted on the page where there's like this... What page are we on where the medical expenses are written out?
Oh...
Page five, is it?
Four. Well, what are you talking about, the ninth? The assumption on the medical expenses was 10, uh, 10% for the employee, 90% for the district, and 50% for a dependent, and 50% for the district on dependents, which is a change.
Bill was struggling with how to cut it down, and how much it would save, which would give us a dollar value, which we could see pretty quickly how it fit with the values that...
Well, this, I believe this number here is built on this, yeah, is built on this. This, on page four, that number right there, to medical?
And it's up to four people that could be on this, uh, for, what if they have families or somebody quits, has more dependents, would that adjust that a little bit?
That would change that, right, that was my concern, I think I mentioned that in one of my little write-ups here. You know, we're sitting on a budget that's based on these four individuals, and if those people change, and somebody now, the previous person turned down the benefits and the new person wants them, then...
So they have the option of turning down these benefits?
That was on 31, too.
But they can't get it later, I mean, if they decide to change their mind...
There's an open enrollment once a year.
Yeah, that's, I think it's the same way with the county, so, okay, so, unless they're a new employee, then they can...
That's about 2,600 bucks a month.
But that's what it came out to, with those, those individuals working here, in those four positions right now, I'm forgetting myself, but the ones that said they would turn the plan down for either themselves or their spouse, if we charged.
This is, this includes the people that would turn, uh, excludes the people that would turn the plan.
Right, so that's after all those declines, that's what it comes out to.
How did it come out on that sheet there? All of my group's binder of health compares to Dave's.
That's gonna take some time.
Oh, yeah, it's, um, the highest rate on here is $670 a month. Wait, no, no, never mind, let's see, 213 rates?
Should be the same as 2014, they did not change.
Yeah, they didn't raise it, that's kinda cool.
I sent you a link to the associate membership page, so you can find out about that.
It was there?
Just did, just did seconds ago.
Okay.
Somebody's looking at that.
Okay, so we'll leave the payroll benefits for, we're gonna leave the payroll benefits line item the way it is right now, unchanged.
Personals.
So we'll address that on Thursday, so let's go down to, uh...
And then it's not related to how much we're costing.
All right, let's go down to the next one, which is minor purchases. Uh, 576.20.30, which is at 49,600.
The, um, on this set, it's quite interesting that in fact, expenditures have been kept right under control, uh, going back to 2010.
Is it similar to 2010?
Yes, it's similar, it's a little bit higher, but given four years, it's really, it's been held right in control, it's surprising with the pool supplies and so on as well, because in fact it's within a thousand dollars.
So we're gonna...
So it's, you can't do much with that.
It's a nice thing about the youth league system, we don't use as much for it.
Professional services, so are we agreeing to leave that one unchecked, because it's capped pretty much the same, and it's something that...
Yeah, you know, that's operating.
All right, so, um, next one's gonna be, uh, other services, we'll look down, where's this one totaled?
Well, you can look at professional services at $63,000.
Professional services, we can look at communication and utilities, some of these are pretty much spoiler plated too, no pun intended with utilities.
Well, let's look at that first group.
Professional services, 20.41, that's at $63,557.84.
So your accounting there is gonna have to get pumped up, 70,000, 7,000 minimum amounts, okay, that's for, oh, I'm sorry, that's, that doesn't, does that include the state authority in that line item?
No.
Or is that intergovernmental?
I don't know whether I put that in accounting or legal or intergovernmental.
Oh, intergovernmental, would be better.
My, my, my number on my page is 59,357, my correct, or am I looking at the wrong page?
We're on page five.
Professional services?
You've got an older... Page four. Five circled.
Yeah, five circled, yeah, no, I'm looking at the five circled, I'm sorry. Everybody on the same page?
I am now, thank you.
Yes, sir. Looking at this, Alan.
How come the numbers are the same and the total is different?
But aren't we just trying to get back to what you made for this year because of the success and relations?
Yeah, oh, that's right, that's payroll processing, yeah.
And Duris may ensure that, folks, they haven't given us further...
I didn't answer that.
They, I ask, I, I've had that one before. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, well, was there a question? Mumbling over here, murmuring.
Um, payroll processing, is that something that has to be farmed out?
Uh, it would cost way more to do it in-house, probably have to hire a full-time person.
Plus the, yeah, I would agree with...
There's no way it would be efficient to not do that, that's, uh, that sits at 850 a month, that's about, they charge us about 3 and 1/4, 350 a payroll, and then we pay, um, $100 a month for rental of the time clock, and then if there's any errors, then you have to go back and reprocess something, um, you know, like somebody's paycheck gotten left out, and there's a small charge for that, but, but, so there's a tiny buffer in there for that, but it comes out about $800 a month, actual, on a normal...
That's the time clock.
Time clock's 100 a month, you know, when, when you look at what the service that ADP was not giving us, you have a simple question for them, they put you on hold for 45 minutes, you have to sit there waiting for the answers from them, you guys were using now immediate answers, reports that ADP claimed they couldn't do, this new company just includes it as part of their package, and for virtually the same thing that we're paying for ADP.
The payroll processing in 2010 was 10,000.
Makes sense?
No.
And we're getting, we're getting close to the service, it's gonna probably have these employees on it.
You don't want the answer unless you ask the question.
Yes, no.
Good question.
All right, so, uh, do we wanna do anything with professional services, or is that one pretty much dead in the water?
The only question I had was dues, memberships and tuition, is what that meant.
It's in the assumptions, tells you what those are.
That's like USA Swimming, to WSI and all that stuff, or what is that? No?
I don't think so, I think these are, it's a, um, I'm not gonna throw anything out there till I just read it too. Uh, $225 for the Oak Harbor Chamber of Commerce, and $450 for Washington Recreation and Parks Association, which is my membership and all five of yours. So that's six memberships in WRPA, 450 bucks, and that's 205 for Oak Harbor Chamber. You can nuke off the rest if you wanna say.
How much would we individually have to pay for that membership?
Whatever that comes out to.
It doesn't work that easily.
What do you mean?
Because I think that it's a group, you can have up to X people from a place, so that if you have, it's X dollars, if you have five, it's X dollars, you know, it's, um, I think it's a sort of, you can, it's like a computer program where you can have five computers at one program.
Right.
Does bank fees include merchant services?
Yeah, yeah, that's a percentage of revenue.
All right, so do we wanna do anything with professional services? Any more questions?
I don't see how we can.
You don't see?
Oh.
I thought somebody was donating landscaping services, except just the plants.
But it's just plants.
So HVAC, PMS, that's pretty much, pretty solid.
It's gonna end up being about 28, I just emailed the commissioners a couple days ago, and I heard from Baron that, um, it was, actually 3,000 was low, pretty where it was, I think it told me it used to be 3,200, they revised and repackaged so that the front end HVAC and the backside HVAC is all one contract now, so they make consolidated trips, and it's gonna cost us a little less. It'll end up being about 2,800.
Is that comparable to, uh, what other vendors would charge us for the same service?
I've looked at other vendors from time to time, I have not sought out other quotes for this service, I can do that, but I, I can't imagine it being any more affordable, so, not, not a problem. The scope of work is laying out there, I haven't signed anything, that's it.
Well, if, if the scope of work is a static, if it's static, then all we need to do is get a couple other vendors to look at it, it doesn't cost us anything to do that.
Did the pool operator not use any of the maintenance also?
Say what?
I mean, did the pool operator use landscape maintenance in the past?
Um, I'm not sure how old that contract is. All they do is mow, so, we have the landscape maintenance up front, the gardens, picking up branches that fall down and all that, that's Dawn that comes every morning and works for two hours.
I'd like to see items like landscape maintenance, uh, fall to volunteer hands, specifically young children who use the pool on a regular basis, who, who on a Saturday afternoon, a couple, a couple few times a year, has a team building exercise, would go out and perform.
If you belong to a dojo, and you do karate or judo or something like that, you clean up outside your dojo, that's part of, being part of that karate club, whatever.
It's this club's job to litter outside the pool.
But I am, but I'm also, I'm also an advocate of, of having, uh, people who receive large benefits of taxpayer funding, such as the team, I know that you're opposed, take some, um, have a volunteer commitment, and by doing this, or by participating in meets, which this last meet, we, we pulled off, but there, there was, I believe, definitely a lack of pre-arranged manpower, um, you know, it, it builds the team, it, it builds the children, and it alleviates some of the financial burden on us.
That, that 1,200 is strictly mowing, that's all it is, it's no, no...
It's not the gang.
Trimming trees, it's not...
So the guy I saw out here raking the leaves and, and spreading the bark?
It was for us, he's on, he's on our payroll, he's on...
He's somewhere else now. But he doesn't operate a lawn mower.
Hold on, nothing motorized, it's not, it's disabled.
Who does, who does the lawn, or the mowing?
It's called new leaf, new leaf.
The mowing?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I, I think it's, it's pretty minimal, so, the computer maintenance, is that what?
It does that to Waypoint's business services?
Have we looked, and I'll bring this up, because I know District Two, and Marv Corn and I have talked about that, District Two's not happy with Waypoint either, I think Marv's ready to kill him, Marv is Dutch, uh, but, um, it might be something to look at quotes for computer maintenance, because I know that Marv said in the past he thought they're exceedingly high.
Seven times more than it was, uh, 2010, but I don't know what that means.
Twenty-seven times more than what we were paying in 2010?
Yeah, it's, uh, was $1,000 in 2010, and it's 7,200 bucks this year in the budget, but I don't know what it means, I can't tell you, you know, it may have been just to bring in paper or something.
What's he doing now, but, I mean, you know, he comes in and works on the server, works on the routers and everything else.
There's a certain number of hours, and I can't quote from the contract exactly what it is, I think it's three or four hours of labor per month that comes with it for 400, I think it is, it's...
600 bucks a month for 72.
600, okay, so there is, I have put a little pad in there, because there are times when we may have some downtime, where we actually have to come here and spend more than those number of hours, he charges 85 bucks an hour for the overage, and it comes out about 400 bucks a month, and they have, um, they maintain our, uh, our backup systems, so everything that we do here, they just back up, they see them, um, and they also, uh, they maintain our firewall as well, so, uh, there's a package that comes with that, 400.
Could we RFP for that?
Impossible, yeah, I mean, they're lucky, service to me is immaculate, maybe people have known other folks that, that, uh, you know, haven't had such great service.
I mean, you've got, you've got one vendor, and I'm not saying that they're available, but you've got one vendor that services three buildings within a very close proximity of here, Oak Harbor School District, they service the school, they service the fire station, they service the senior center, why would it cost, could they be approached and asked if, if they would also take on our... Why would it cost, could they be approached and asked if they would also take on ours? You know, it's, like you say, it's, we save a thousand dollars on each light on them, that adds up, you know, to-
Yeah, if we budgeted that for forty-eight hundred bucks, if that's what your baseline is, then we wouldn't be in trouble for the year, we wouldn't have your cushion, but it would get us down twenty-four hundred bucks, if we're looking at human cost on the other cuts. Alright.
Yeah, and ARC, that's kind of a fixed thing with American Red Cross.
Yeah, you know, a lot of that-
Health and safety.
A lot of that would actually go as a cost, because that, quite a bit of that ends up in that line item.
Offs the revenue.
Yeah, it's the certificates, the lifeguard certs, and the WSI certs, one Alan was joking about a couple of months ago, why we paying so much for lifeguard certificates for it. It's American Red Cross's cost of certifying, it's not, it's a big or two, but it's, yeah, so it's their processing charge for us to use their name and classes. So most of that six thousand dollars is that, there's probably, some of that is, you know, we have to buy a new videotape for a chat or something like that.
What services do we get from American Red Cross for, let's say a kid gets a water safety instructor credential, does that kid get any help from the Red Cross if they're looking for a job? Like, will Red Cross certify their qualification independently to whoever they're applying to, or is there, is there any return, or is it just a matter of getting the document?
Well, if you're carrying the card, it's good wherever you go.
I understand that, what I'm trying to find out is, is there, do these people provide service to the people that got the certificate?
Yeah.
In other words, they do anything proactively after you-
To help them, yeah, once they've got it, or, you know, it's-
Probably not so much.
It's the card.
It's just the card.
It's the card, it's like being, it's, you know, it's like getting your state EMS, whether you're a paramedic, or just a regular EMT, you get the card that says you can work in that function, in that type of- But can't they phone the person that issues the card and get-
Referrals to other jobs if you move out of state, and that kind of thing, I'm not an expert on those things.
There's not a big, not a big return on that.
I'm giving you a guess here, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say no. I could certainly ask Erica about that, she's the expert on those things.
Yeah. I was curious.
Legal, that's one, two thousand and eleven, we paid a thousand dollars to legal, two thousand and twelve, we paid twelve thousand dollars, two thousand and thirteen, we're up pretty close to thirty thousand. I don't, I, I hope that's correct, but I'd rather be a higher number than lower.
Thirty in two thousand and thirteen, and the cost of fraud investigation.
Exactly, well, that's fine, I mean, it's still-
So if you look at twenty-four and add six thousand to it, that would be, that would be thirty. Why don't we leave it at twenty-four? And hope that maybe the bad storms move on.
I'd like it all to go away too, you can't fight that hope really, but you know.
We don't know.
Well, that's just it, I mean, we still have, things are out there.
We have a couple, yeah, we have a couple pending legal issues, I mean, besides the two lawsuits.
I know Endurance will pick up some stuff, but as far as us-
Endurance has covered a lot more than twenty-four thousand bucks, I forget, a number of times I talked to Keller Allen, every week, boom, boom, boom.
And we still have the Andy King case too, to think about. I mean, Chris Kelly is paid for by our insurance.
Endurance pays him.
But, there's other issues there that may come up, that, as we've talked about, it opens up a whole nother discussion.
So, we say it's twenty-four, what if it's, if it's more, we have to pay it, I mean, so what's it come out of?
I think it's a reasonable guess, I think that's kind of what we're down to right now. You know, when there's a-
There's twenty-four last year.
When there's some sort of finding, or some sort of movement in this, in these pending cases, Nathan has to be kept informed, because he's directly responsible for our best interests, as opposed to defending the insurance company. I run every single response to a public records request by Nathan, because some of them can be fairly momentous, as far as whether they're valid or not, or whether my response was correct, or whether there's some legality that I hadn't thought of. I feel like I've become an expert on the Public Records Act, but he's the boss, and he tells us how we're supposed to deal with those things. You know, when there's, Sean mentioned Andy King, that situation, if there's a judgment or movement in that case, and there's some sort of public disclosure to be made, or, you know, it's, it's the plaintiff's attorney that always calls the Wimby News Times, and says, hey, guess what, it's another billion-dollar settlement, you know, and then it ends up in the paper, and they call us and ask us for a statement.
And we call Nathan.
And, yeah, and then we call Nathan and say, okay, what do we say?
Because Chris Kelly, because Chris Kelly, who represents the insurance company for the Andy King case, does not represent the district. Alright, so if we, as a district, make a statement, or have a question, we have to run it by Nathan, and not Chris Kelly, so it's that wonderful, very straightforward legal system which we deal with.
We run it by Chris too.
So, yeah, but we have to run it by Nathan, because Nathan represents the district. Chris, yeah, I think twenty-four is a good excellent, so.
We can't guess.
Okay. Our latest bill that we're paying is for September and October, and it's thirty-eight hundred bucks. So that's, you know, I feel like it's getting down to that level, and that should be fairly reasonable going forward.
Alright, so communication, let's go on, we're gonna leave professional services the way it is, untapped. I think there was twenty-four hundred bucks on, on computer maintenance that you're gonna look at. So we're gonna look at twenty-four hundred dollars on computer maintenance. Not dropping it down to forty-eight hundred from seventy-two hundred.
I can look at our basic contract, and just assume that's all we're paying, and then if we end up with an overage, we'll have to pull it from somewhere else.
But you were going to find out if there was, although we're all trying to get service. So by Thursday, next Thursday, we can look at that, okay?
I can be honest with you, that's gonna be kind of tough for me, to get that done by next Thursday. I mean, deposition's on Tuesday and Wednesday next week, and I'm not here tomorrow or Monday.
Can we ask Nicole to look at that?
I can throw some details down from Nicole, see if she can look at that.
Okay.
You're right, if you get it, and it's lower, that's okay. As long as it's not going over.
Communication, we're gonna look at that, twenty forty-two.
Sounds like it is what it is.
Okay.
There's a whole lot of widdle around there.
Travel, one thousand, twenty forty-three, one thousand two hundred dollars.
We took out all of the swim coach travel.
This budget shows all the swim coach travel.
Travel expense is gone.
So if we add that back in?
The only dollar that's left is if somebody on the staff needs to go somewhere on business, and that'll cover mileage.
With the swim coach travel back in there, what is it, what was it before?
It started out with eighty-six hundred dollars.
That concerns me.
Eighty-six hundred dollars for travel, so let's look at eighty-six hundred dollars for travel, twenty point forty-three. What concerns you, Kurt?
If you're saying, does this include Bill Patterson's travel?
Yes, lining was-
Eighty-six hundred would, yes.
The understanding was that, based on, see that thirty-six thousand, that red number right there, last time we met, that was eighty-four thousand dollars. So to get that down, get down the negative net contribution that the NWA and Masters Program has toward the bottom line of the district, the understanding between Sean and the-
I threw it out there, well, hey, let's, let's take the travel out.
With the assumption that there's going to be a booster club-
The booster club does that.
Yeah.
No, and that's, and like I said before, it's an idea to throw out there.
Yeah, okay.
Right? And as I said before, again, there's five people here.
No idea.
There were no ideas floated by anybody. So before, before anybody nails me to a flipping cross, let's just put it this way, nobody's floating ideas out there, boys and ladies.
Well, it's not for us.
So, um-
It's a close Sunday, but-
Yeah, you did, you did.
Let me ask something, so it was eighty-six hundred?
It was eighty-six hundred, so that's what we're looking at, eighty-six hundred.
Ninety-six hundred.
Ninety-six?
Ninety-six hundred, and in twenty-ten, it was eight thousand.
Okay, so ninety-six hundred, what do you want to do with travel?
If that goes away, that takes Bill Patterson's travel, that's his way as well.
I'll take the club, the captain step up and take care of it.
Yes, that was the curveball I threw in, is, hey, let's have the most fuck do it. Right, just a suggestion.
We need to keep moving on the booster hand down.
You know, we don't-
Well, that's right.
Bill Patterson does, if that's the answer, and I'm not saying it is.
There's a really, really serious thought.
Well, that's right, he can't do it, it's gotta be parents that. There's a really serious thought, and that is, if it is a program of the district, and if we are providing the programs to the public, and if the travel of the coaches is a fundamental aspect of that program, because we're not gonna send the kids out there by themselves, and it's gotta be in our budget, it's eight thousand. Okay, so that was mine, so my bad there is not understanding that. Hold on a second.
There's sixteen thousand dollars.
Oh. Hold on, so that's my bad for not understanding that as a fundamental part of the program, we have to pay for it. Okay, thanks.
Six thousand dollars earmarked for NWA, sitting on account, not being used, right?
Uh, wrong.
No, 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 no.
It's mixed.
Yeah, we put that back. It was swim expenses, I think, didn't we say that?
Help me out, please. We showed it as, we showed it as swim team revenue for twenty thirteen. Right here, right straight to the bottom line, general fund.
Okay.
But we carry it forward to twenty fourteen.
Until it runs out?
Yeah, because it would've been two years of travel expenses, and that's kind of what that money was, uh-
So why don't we carry it forward?
The money was donated for.
Carry it forward, sixteen- To twenty fourteen, well, whatever we haven't spent, I mean, rather than- I'm pretty sure we just spent-
We just drew twenty-five thousand out of the reserve fund.
Yeah, there's no money.
So you're telling me that sixty-one thousand dollars was spent on swim team expenses? Is that the way?
Yeah.
It went into the general fund, it was spent on what?
Yeah.
I never had any direction, how it made it all within swim team expenses.
Yes, you did.
I did not.
Yes, it was swim team expenses, sixteen thousand dollars is putting in its revenues.
Swim team revenue.
And then, but you can't spend it outside of the swim team.
I was never given that direction.
Now, certainly my understanding. Okay, we can go, we can go look at that.
Even with the sixteen thousand dollars, more has been spent on swim team this past year than was received in dues, and that sixteen thousand dollars in swim team income. Total that all up, and more than that has been spent directly on this program.
We are going back to the old test of money is what justifies action, whereas I've been trying to say, that the quality of programs at least possible expense, and a good range of programs, justifies the district.
Can you put that in context, please?
It's been a mission statement of this district for years.
I know, the context of that mission statement, the full context was the district has the fiduciary responsibility to provide the best possible program at the least possible cost to the taxpayer.
No, to participants.
That's the sentence that you were quoting out of context.
Okay, so looking at the ninety-six hundred and travel.
Pull it up for you.
Looking at the ninety-six hundred and travel, because that's what we're talking about tonight.
So that's what we're increasing it to, ninety-six?
Was it ninety-six or eighty-six that you found in the last, last budget?
It was ninety-six.
It was ninety-six, thank you.
Eight thousand in twenty-ten.
Eight thousand in twenty-ten.
Well, what's reasonable there?
So, yeah, what do you think's reasonable there?
He said between eight and ten.
Eight and ten?
Yeah, I think the original assumptions actually included that, so let's do it.
Okay, thank you.
Page-
So, yeah, we've gotta bump that back up, there's no way to-
That's fine.
Oh, you know what, it says travel is primarily for the swim team, again, we should discuss the role of the booster club, that was on page fourteen of my original assumption.
Thank you. And what was the number?
That was, somebody said it was a lot in ten thousand.
Eight to ten.
It was eight thousand in twenty-ten.
Ninety-six hundred.
Okay, ninety-six hundred, alright, I believe it, I believe that is right. Scared.
I mean, if we get the booster club going, great.
So we're gonna keep travel at ninety-six hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, moving to WGEP insurance?
I assumed a ten percent increase, that's what we got last year.
Okay, so the fifty-five hun, fifty-five thousand, pardon me, is a ten percent increase.
Yeah, we don't get our, we don't actually get told what our rate is, you know, after the first.
Okay, so utilities, twenty forty-seven.
Does it close back to totally need that you have emailed out?
I'm, yeah, I'm actually very concerned right now, because our most recent gas bill, after we installed the new furnaces, and after we cut back fresh outside air twenty-five percent, of course, the colder it is outside, the more of that has to be heated, after we did those things, we still got a gas bill for six thousand dollars for October, for a month, and, yeah, for one month.
Yeah.
And, so we've been talking to the gas company, they figured out what's going on, obviously there's a leak back there, but they were investigating the possibility of the meter might be malfunctioning, I'm really hoping that's what the case is, that's, yeah, so they were gonna come check on the meter.
That's best-case scenario.
Yeah, yeah, and we have two brand-new, allegedly more efficient heaters out there, and, you know, during the summer, for instance, we had that outside air intake cranked to a hundred percent, so we're pretty much exhausting everything we brought in, Aaron, when it's sixty, seventy degrees out there, you don't have to worry too much about it, but now, you know, obviously we wanna make sure we crank that, that number down.
Well, that definitely plays into the, the other question that faces us, on whether or not we raise the pool temperature, or how is that gonna impact us?
Well, we have to get those thermometers back, because that was a clear direction, we need three months of data.
And get thermometers, and we'll tell them.
We have, we've had accurate thermometers measuring our temperature at eighty-two degrees for as long as I've been here.
That was a direction though, that we were doing, as Tom was taking care of that, so that we could be honest- The way I understood it, Tom, when I talked to Matt the other day, Tom's thermometer, when I talked to Matt, Tom's thermometers were never accurate, that was the problem, and the problem with Tom's thermometers are, they were always fluctuating from day to day, so you put Tom's thermometer right next to the thermometer that's in the pool, one reads eighty-two, Tom's thermometer one day will read eighty-one, the next day, they read the pool thermometer, it's eighty-two, Tom's thermometer reads eighty-four, so, which thermometer's got an issue? I'm not sure.
I know that we have, we-
I'm not guessing that's not right.
Yeah.
No, no, I would just, I would just mention the fact that, that if we were to raise the pool temperature to satisfy the needs of those patrons, it would increase the gas.
So, our utilities, is that gonna go up or go down, what do we want to do with this?
We can't control it.
Can't control it, alright. Repair me.
The concern I have, I would like to be able to control it, and the, eh, numbers-
They're gonna go high on it, they'll low, because-
Right, where you look at, the two items that are, that are actually gas, and I'd like to retitle these, so it's a little easier to read, but the boiler at the top for forty-eight thousand, that's, that's actually not just the boiler, that's the gas for the furnace in the back, so pool water and pool air, and the air side is glass. Where it says spa, that is gas for the, to heat the hot tub, it heats the showers in the locker room, and it's also gas for the HVAC of this end of the building, so, on the offices, locker room areas. So, there has been no fluctuation really in, in the spa gas, except Cascade Natural Gas has predicted they'll be raising rates about eighteen percent, believed as of the first of the year. The problem is with boiler, which at forty-eight thousand dollars, that number was placed there assuming we'll have a more efficient system after the heaters have been, have been changed out. Now that that's in doubt, that number may end up being higher than that. So, until I get some indication from the gas company about whether that meter is accurate or not, then I'd be-
When will we hear back from?
I've been bugging them for a couple of weeks, actually, have not heard whether they've been out to check the meter.
Yes, the air is in their favor.
Exactly.
So if we increase these gas numbers, twenty percent would be probably safer.
I believe, if we look at the assumptions again, I think that eighteen percent was already what they were.
Oh, was it? I'm just thinking, so six thousand's starting in the winter months, it's gonna get, those are gonna go up with November, December, January, February, well, for fourteen, January, February, March, April.
Right, so here on page fifteen at the top, there's an assumption of, where it's a Cascade Gas may be raising their rates as much as twenty percent. a Cascade Gas may be raising their rates as much as 20%.
So you update...
So the 48 and the 12 actually already includes that. It's, my concern is that the 48 may end up being higher. If the meter is accurate and there's something going on back here that's out of our control, then that may end up being higher than 48. You go 12 months at $6,000, and you're looking at 72 instead of 48. So we're going to continue to try to figure that out. And I'm not going to change that until I get an answer from the gas company.
I just want to prove it, you know, being low and have a...
And we got another week to see if we get an answer from them.
Will we know a little more?
I would, I would hope to, yes, to know more within a week.
Right, okay. Maybe ask Matt to look at that.
Mm-hmm.
All right, utilities, we want to leave it where it's at, then?
No.
Okay.
It's pretty accurate.
N W P R D Repair and Maintenance, $30,000.
Is that for upcoming, what about the other part of the roof? Is that going to be okay?
There's nothing in there for that, for the other part of the roof. I haven't even looked at bids on that yet.
That's $2,500 per month for ongoing repairs.
Is that what that ends up being?
Yeah.
You know, that throws in, this year, the things that we didn't plan were boiler, the diving board, um, my mind is facing right now.
Transmission.
Yeah, well, there was that, there was a different line item.
Yeah, it's the hot tub.
Yeah, ongoing issues with the hot tub, and ongoing issues the first part of the year with the new pump that we had installed. There were a few thousand dollars that had to go into that that weren't planned. So generally, that, that line item is a sort of compilation of small stuff. We, you know, break a lane line or, you know, you have a starting block fall over or glass breaks, one of these panes of glass shattered a few months ago, just un...
Those are pretty pricey, aren't they?
Uh-huh. So, so those types of things go into that.
So is there another line item for, I guess, what might be unforeseen as big items? Or, I guess not.
That reserve.
Is that a reserve?
Yeah, it'd be our reserves.
That's, yeah, that's where the, yeah, the reserve would be. The reserve is generally written from where I saw it done in past budgets. What did I say, 2000, 2010 was the last one. So it was in the budget at the beginning of the year, $25,000 to go to facility reserve, and it wasn't, there was nothing done with it until, uh, 12/31 of that year, where it was transferred from the AM and O account into the reserve account. So that was, that was pretty much how it was done.
That way, it's there if you need it for the big ticket items.
That's exactly right. We were worried about the roof at that time, and we thought we were trying to save for it because we knew it only had a certain layer expectancy.
So do we leave N W P R, do we leave 2,048 where it's at at 30?
I think that's, that's a reasonable guess, and I only put it that way because, I mean, you never know what's going to break in the course of the year.
Right.
You have a spa boiler go down, and all of a sudden, you know, you're five, you're out $5,000 bucks.
So we want to leave it there?
Leave it there.
Leave it there. Intergovernmental, it's a thousand, that needs to go up to...
I would just add $7,000.
$7,000 to that, so it'll be 8,000, right there.
What are we adding?
Because we have a state audit coming here and...
We'll pay for it in '14.
We'll pay for it in '14 because they won't be finished and get the audit back to us until 2014, so they...
Here's another, another piece of good news. The Employee Advisory Service, or E A P, has, I looked at the contract after I put this in advisory, it's only $720, so...
Yay!
So yippee, there's $280. So we'll call this $7,720.
Okay. Non-aquatic Recreation Program, light item 80.40. What is that? Yeah.
Um, I believe we talked about that.
Oh, yes.
By the time, special events, there's a couple hundred dollars a month in there for special events, expenses where, you know, we can get goldfish for the goldfish swim or decorations for Pirate Night and that kind of thing, so. We are actually up to, of course, you've got to turn here on the table. Special events, we actually had $6,000 budget this year for special events. We really spent, year-to-date, $2,190. That's through, that one's through today, so essentially, $200 apart, so that's where that, that $2,400 comes from.
Is that because you got promotion in that special events? Is that all it's been in that now?
Yeah, you know, we talked, actually, you missed last time, that we were talking about how all of our promotions, we're trying to do collaboratively and sort of underground marketing through Facebook, on our website, working with other, other web-based organizations on the island, where there's a little bit of Curtis' time goes in there just for his ability to get around town and talk to people.
Director, do these special events, do they typically pay for themselves? That's what I want you to know.
That's a great question because sometimes a special event...
Goldfish or the haunted swamp or...
Right, sometimes a special event might happen as an individual sort of off, off the regular scheduled event, like, yeah, goldfish swamp. Those are two great examples. The color run wasn't our event, it's actually Curtis agreed that they helped promote, and that's all, all we did.
Got our name out there.
Yeah, we did.
For free.
The, so the goldfish swim, haunted swamp, those are two great examples. Those do pay for themselves, just in the, in the, the extra people and everything. Sometimes we have, we have a special event that's part of an existing open swim time. For instance, our Pirates Plunder Night that we do, that one just happens at 7:30 on a Friday night. So it's a little tough to tell, you know, did we get 20 more kids this time than we did on a normal Friday night? But it kind of adds to the excitement of being a part of what's going on at the pool.
So it can raise the money.
So we want to leave it where it's at?
Leave it.
Okay. Last, last page, Professional Services, $3,280.
That's for Clover Valley.
Okay. Anybody want to make it?
The landscaping maintenance is more money out there than it is...
Okay, all right, stop, 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 thank you. Anybody want to change that? Awesome.
I can hear you said, I'd start counting.
Oh, I said it's the Clover Valley, so it's landscape maintenance is the porta potty, right? And $600, $650 that, uh, stinking, little, no, the baseball guys.
Babe Ruth.
Babe Ruth, thank you. Big word for it. And they pay the, they pay for that.
Sounds great.
Uh, what now?
Babe Ruth pays $600, what?
He pays for the 32 years, but...
Yeah, $2,200 for mowing.
Right, and Babe Ruth pays what?
Well, Babe Ruth pays for, that's on a revenue item.
Okay.
The expense item, those are $2,200 for mowing, it's more than it is here because there's a lot more grass and two baseball outfielders than it is sitting around the pool here. And the 1080 is $85 a month, I think it is, for the porta potty that's out there all year round. And the utility's 675, that's for water, which is turned off four months of the year.
Do we need a porta potty out, out there all year round?
I would strongly advise it because I don't really like the alternative.
Gotcha. Matt going out there cleaning human feces would probably not be a good idea.
When was the last time we have RFPs for landscaping?
Um, I have to check our current contract. I think we have, uh, may have two questions.
But that gets absorbed by the leagues, right, that cost, not all that.
They're only giving $650 so far.
$250 total for the year.
Actually, well, and they, but the league also helps me.
Yes, they, they do the lines, he does all the lines and everything else out there.
We're looking at, as a program of the district, if you consider Clover Valley an all-in-one program, we're looking at taking in 2,000, and we're looking at spending $3,955. And we won't give them any water time for that, so, you know, it's a tiny, tiny little thing.
Still wondering. Do we own it?
We own it.
Could you sell that property?
Could you sell the one up there on Highland Drive?
Use it for something that...
That's a whole other thing to look into because that's like a splash park.
Okay. Okay, so do we want to change, do we want to change since we can't build a splash park this year? Do we want to change line item, 80.41, for $3,280?
Potential area.
You can tell I'm outgoing.
Alan?
I think we should leave her, but I think it's a potential to, again, extend our programs, and I'm really upset with the way we've lost so many peripheral programs.
Okay, so we're going to leave it. Utilities, 80.47, what's that utilities for? That's 675 there.
Lights.
Lights out there, Clover Valley.
We don't have any lights out there. That's the water.
Water, water.
Just water.
We're not allowed to have lights out there.
And part of that problem is you're paying a surcharge to the city. Well, carpet will buy the water out there because it's not inside city limits.
There you go.
Uh, not so much. There is a, there is a meter fee. I haven't noticed that there's an actual surcharge on there.
You do shut it down from... You pay more for water out there per gallon than you pay for it here.
Your, your employer actually called us a year ago and said, why is this on your billing? Your, actually, I think it was $125 a month, why is this on in December? You should really shut it off, which I thought was pretty generous of the city to call and do that, so we shut it off.
Yeah, we shut it off for four months.
First of November through sometime in March, so four plus months, so just open money.
All right, so we got down to the end here on our expenses. So Thursday, we want to look at this, going from page one all the way back, with a 5% decrease on line item 576.20.10. Hold on. Page three.
Page three.
Starting at the beginning. So Thursday, at the meeting, we want to look at this, at a 576.20.10 salary and wages decrease of 5%. Which will also relate to a 5% decrease on line item 576.2011, which is payroll benefits, actually, .12, which is payroll taxes, correct, Bill?
Yeah. Yes.
We got the 576.20.20, which is personnel benefits. The current one shows us reducing employees to, they pay 10%, the district pays 90%, and 50 for, 50 for dependents. Do we want to change that?
The only question is whether it would dovetail with whatever the co-op is, your city's co-op.
So we're going to leave that open, then, right now?
Because if it's 85.15, then you'd want to do that, and if it became ownership, then you could talk about your cash.
So we'll look at 576.20.20 with multiple options, then?
Yes.
On Thursday. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. 576.20.30, which is minor purchases, we're going to leave alone.
One question on medical, Bill, again, Affordable Care Act, is that going to affect our part-timers? I mean, have you got more feedback on that?
The, um, the Affordable Care Act, from every place that I've worked, doesn't apply to part-time employees.
It does, you're right.
Okay.
Okay, so 576.20.41, we're going to leave the same. 576.20.42, we're going to leave the same, communication. .43 for travel, we're going to up to 9,600. 20.46, the insurance will remain the same.
Yeah, the only thing was that has a 10% escalator built into it.
What is?
Well, I thought you said that when we were talking about that insurance, that you made it 10% more than this year.
Yes.
You know that's what it's going to be, or is that a...
No, that's what I was saying, they don't even tell us until after the first two years.
So we won't know that. We can't budget for it until January because they don't tell us until January.
Or we could put $50,000 down and adjust the budget.
What we pay this year, there's no way we're not getting any interest.
I have no idea.
Yeah, probably better.
We paid, we paid, uh...
Okay.
Just short of $50,000, and then we had a 10% increase last year.
I said we budget for the 10% increase, and then if not, we've got $5,000.
And we became victims, and, you know, Killer Allen has, I don't know what he's costing, in the meantime, so.
That's probably a pretty...
Based on experience rating.
Stephen, how do you guys feel, leave it the same?
Leave it at 55.
Okay, leave it at 55. All right, 576.20.47, utilities, we're going to leave the same. Repairs and maintenance, we're going to leave the same. Intergovernmental, 576.20.50, we're going to raise to 7720, I believe you said, correct, Bill?
Yes.
But you're going to add a new line, which is the audit, state audit.
That'll be in, that's included in Intergovernmental.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's, um, but just to...
So you see in line item five, okay, yeah, okay. So 80.40, the non-aquatic 2,400, we're going to leave the same. 80.41, Professional Services, we'll leave the same, and 80.47 will leave the same. Any changes, deletions that I didn't mention?
I just wanted to point out that there was a couple good points brought up, that we should get RFPs for computer services and landscaping maintenance, trying to get those costs down.
Along with RFPs as soon as possible for...
To try and adjust the budget.
Landscaping, maintenance, and computer services.
Also still considering the 10% pay increase across the board.
We'll talk about that, yes, in just a second. Did you want to bring that up?
I can't make that.
Next topic.
I'm going to get some recognition.
No, yeah, we're going to look at a 10%, Alan was willing to entertain a 5% decrease with a 10% increase, correct? So let's look at the budget also with a 10% increase across the board.
Including NWA.
A 10% increase across the board.
What about swim lessons that just got raised a year ago?
10% across the board. We can change it once we look at it to see what it means, but right now, 10% across the board.
Okay, so just clarifying here...
Are you going, is it going to harm swim lessons? Let me ask you that.
Well, no more than swim teams.
I don't know, but what you're looking at is, is there was no change in, in rates for anything from '06 until spring of '12. You gave the swim lessons at that time a 20% increase, from $33 to $40. That's a 20% increase. And now...
I know the programs were increased at that time.
Nothing else was increased at that time.
Well, I don't think we should raise them.
Now we're going to go back and raise them another 10%, because other programs haven't been touched for seven years.
So what? I'm really tired of this. Um, it's not, it's this year we're looking at, we're looking at this budget, and if we raise everything 10%, if we find we have some wiggle room, then maybe the swim, the swim lessons should be not raised 10%, but let's see what...
I disagree.
I'm asking for clarification was all I...
Our primary mission is to teach people how to swim safely and on occasion, increasing the fee, or increase that fee, if it comes unknown.
Well, I'd like to add, too, that what programs are making money versus what programs. I mean, if we're...
All right, behind me.
If it's losing, well, yeah, that's based on, is that based, are those just costs?
The swim schools make money.
Direct costs?
Those are direct costs.
Direct costs, okay, that's what I wanna hear.
Exactly.
So, can you just point some of those out real quick?
Sure. This is after, this is after all those assumptions, on the revised assumptions, after Sean and I-
Latest and latest.
Yeah, yeah, so that fifth, actually, this is on the fourth pass budget. The fifth pass, just, all that did was take away the, the retirement plan from the two people that would turn it down, so it's only saved about 6,000 bucks. But, what we've just done here, how much should be added to swim team travel budget? 8,400? Something like that. This becomes 45,000, essentially.
Right.
So the, the, what we're seeing is that NWA and Masters, direct cost, after, this is revenue, and this revenue is based on 15% rate increase, not 10, 15. Direct cost, negative net contribution to the district's bottom line is 45,000 dollars.
That revenue also includes swim meet revenue?
Right. Swim, yeah, dues and, and swim meets, right? There were some assumptions in there about how much we could take out of swim meets, which, by the way, my assumptions were low, if we could use the Halloween Challenge as an example, because instead of 4,000 dollars, we netted 5,900.
Yeah, whoop-oo.
So maybe we revise that upwards a little bit, but in comparison, swim school has a net contribution at our current rates of 12,000 dollars plus.
That's leaving that alone.
So if you're-
Yeah, that's leaving it alone.
You can make this number even bigger by-
Maybe, if you increase it too much.
Yeah, I, the, the comments I hear about pricing on swim school right now generally are that it's either just about right or a little high.
Like, if you're gonna look at it, they get four hours for 40 bucks, right? You get the gold chain for 60. You're gonna love that.
Yeah. There you go. I think we're, we're getting all munched up over something small, because if you were to say, and it's not a large leap to say, okay, here's how much swimsuit, swimsuit, swim team revenue is, is budgeted for, even remath, you would say, you'd say, what's 10% of that, add that on, I mean, so it's not that big a deal to look at it both ways.
But if we've already raised this this year, 20%, I don't really think it's fair to those families to raise it another 10%, but at the same time, these other programs, you haven't raised it at all since 2006.
They get penalized twice, everybody else gets penalized once.
If you have basic service, instead of enhancing service, I don't think they should look at that increasing up anymore. It was already increased.
So if we're, if we're only raising this 10%, it's a 15% increase booked into this, so if we're only raising it 10%, then that number gets even bigger. And, you know, just to clarify where I stand on this, the comments that I made about that number, I don't know if anybody here is gonna agree with me on this, but I have never ever said that this is a bad thing or that it's wrong. In fact, I've stood in front of members of the public who have come to me and asked what's going on, and why is that number so big, and why are we giving so much money to somebody who should be a private team? I've had people tell me this whole program should be wiped out and started over again as a private entity, and they should come and rent full-time like everybody else does, and they should pay for their full-time. And I've stood there and said to every one of these people, that this program that we were running it is a benefit to the community, and for anybody to think otherwise is just wrong. And all I'm saying with my recommendations here is that you should be moving in the right direction to show some responsibility to the rest of the community. These people that walk in and pay their 263 for a, for a visit on a punch card, all that money goes straight to the bottom line, there's no direct cost to that program. There are a ton of direct costs to the swim, swim team program.
So 10% across the board, or do we wanna leave out the swim team?
I mean, the swim lessons.
Swim, leave out the swim lessons?
No, I, no, I've said it's swim lessons, not swim team.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah.
Swim, swim lessons are the same.
No, I, I just, I-
Part of, part of-
Do you need to mention?
I don't think we're, no, because we're gonna look at it in next month's meeting, don't think we just need to talk about it here?
I agree that we need to-
You wanna make a motion?
No, no, I don't, I don't actually.
So then 10% applies to-
Everybody?
I'm just a little near on it. I think it's okay, I mean, we don't have to, I say you look at it without a rate increase on the swim school, and then, as a note, here's what the number would be if it was there. Because then you get-
Here's a good compromise, let's look at it, because it's easy to add in. Is that what that implies, get people to look at? Alan, would that be it?
That's what I said, that's what I was hoping for, that we just put it there and take a look at it, and then we could take it out once we saw what the numbers were.
I thought you were proposing to take it out and then add it in.
The same thing.
Vice versa.
Okay, whichever way.
It's exactly the same.
Here we go, let's go ahead and do-
We're talking about-
When you, when you look at this revised report for, for, make everything 10%, put a big star beside it and show, so we can see what the difference is, so we can take it out right away if we find that we don't need it.
Right, that would be in side comments to this, what I'm saying is, in the actual budget, the report that you get, it does, it is not going to include 10% on the swim team.
And then you could hand, you could handwrite on the bottom.
Swim school, sorry.
You could even handwrite on the bottom, here's what it would be if it did include 10%.
So 10% on, and by the way, pool rentals went up from something extremely low to 150 dollars at the same time that swim school was raised.
Yeah.
So we'll put those two programs off to the side, not raise them, everything else goes up 10%, is that what we're saying?
Raise the pool rentals.
What Alan wants is raise everything, and then a note to the side, what it is without that 10% on those two programs.
Is that the direction I'm getting here?
That's great.
But we're just gonna look at it next month, and then we can make the motion and vote on it.
If we don't need it, we'll take it out.
I'm assuming next month, next month, next week, sir. Next week, we gotta do it next week.
We'll have to do it next week.
You're wasting time for me.
Seven days from now, 14, yeah, remath, which is the 21st, yes. But lunch won't be certified by the 21st, sorry.
There would be no logical reason to raise the swim team.
Okay, but we'll look at it. No, go ahead, do you wanna?
There's just no logical reason here, it's already been raised 20% last spring. There is no, no possible way you can think that that's right, so that's why I said-
Well, let's check and see exactly when it was raised. Time marches by very quickly.
Last minutes? 22, you're in half.
You're asking a few comments on this, people.
Alright, anything else we wanna see with the revised budget on Thursday? No, Alan? Anything else?
I still have real problems with the mission of the place, and Bill has assumed that I said something out of context, which is balderdash, what we did for years and worked at, and we had it in the warehouse of resolutions, was to make sure that we had a balance, we provided the best programs at the least expense to members of the community. And, you know, that is a very different orientation from this strictly looking at what costs and horrible things like your statement, take away the current privilege of NWA and Masters members to use the pool for free at times other than their scheduled workout. They don't use it for free. It's been a place where you pay your pass, and then you pay the increment, as I said at the beginning of the meetings. These things are totally misinterpretations of what we're, what was there. And I just wanna make-
I'd never heard that interpretation till tonight, I'll be honest with you, and I'm, my kid swam longer than I've been a commissioner here, and hold on, it's not written that way anywhere, it wasn't explained by me to, to me that way, by the current head coach, the former head coach, or any swim parent.
None of them were there.
So, wait, they were all there!
Take a look at the warehouses and the resolutions going back years.
Okay, I don't, and, you know what? If you write a mission statement that way, maybe that's the way it used to be done, cool. Nowadays, that's not the way you write a mission statement in warehouses. When you look at, when you look at organizations, whether it's government, private sector, a mission statement is short, it's one paragraph, it's maybe two to three sentences, and it, it's more bulletized, and it's easy to understand by all. To think, that, well, that's not easy to understand, and if that's it, that's fine, nobody pointed it out to me, okay? And as a swim parent, nobody ever pointed that out to me. As a swim parent, nobody ever said, hey, when you pay your dues on for your kid, you're paying for that yearly pass plus coaches fees, until tonight. So if I'm saying, I as a swim parent who's paid those dues now for years, never heard that until tonight, and that was with former coaches, former swim parents, former commissioners who were swim parents, and that's the first time I've heard that. We can't expect anybody else at this table, nor the director, to be that far off base on that. I mean, for Christ's sakes, you know, I-
Do you not believe me?
I'm not saying I don't believe you, Alan, I'm saying it's the first flipping time I've heard it.
Okay.
The numbers don't bear it out.
So, whether the numbers bear it out or not, I'm saying that's the first time I've ever heard that explanation. It's great, I like it, because it makes sense to me. But I'm saying, but I'm saying, if that's the first time I've heard it, how many other people have never heard that?
I don't know.
Or, exactly.
Bad communication.
Exactly, bad job on our part, that's our responsibility as a commission, we failed that. It's our job to make sure that the director, whoever the director is, understands that. We have failed at that. Past commissions have failed at that, because I wasn't a commissioner when my kids started swimming here, and I never understood that. So, our job as a commission to make sure people understand that. We have failed. Don't blame the people that don't understand it, we need to own up and be leaders in this community and accept responsibility for it.
My speech, but when I was-
No, it's not a nice speech.
Yes, when I was chair-
Do you have anything else? Well, that's great.
Yeah.
I took your spot and you didn't explain it to me.
I gave you all my focus.
But that didn't explain it to me!
You know what?
Did you have anything else, Kurt?
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'll get to, I'll get to, I'll get to your second.
So our budget's most likely still gonna be in the red.
With the-
With these adjustments.
With these adjustments-
It's still gonna be in the red.
I-
Is that gonna go out of salaries and wages?
I couldn't compute that fast to tell you where it's gonna stay.
No, because we had to add-
Well, 5% decrease in, in payroll is gonna give us 25,000 dollars to play with in payroll, if we're looking for 18 or 17.
Okay.
That's without, without the 25,000 dollar facility reserve.
Yeah.
So if we're looking for 42, then I can very much tell you that, yeah, that's gonna be-
Do we wanna get the reserve back to 100,000? Because that's-
It's impossible right now, right now.
It'd be possible, I mean, I can tell you, I, I'm really struggling to-
We could-
Where I'm gonna come up with 25,000 dollars to pay out of that payroll.
Like Alan was saying though, you set it off to the side in 1231, you put it in there, hopefully you got it, I guess, is that what you recall, was that?
Well, that's, no, that's-
You said, oh, you said that.
I was, I was looking at, I was looking at the budget versus actual for '09 and then I figured, well, it seemed like that's how it was done, where you can see a transaction on 1231, the 25 goes from one account to the other, and it's expensed out against the facility reserve, you know, that, that seemed to be how it was done.
Well, our, our costs are in salaries and wages, that's bottom line, it's simple.
Oh, yeah, those are your big hitters, right, right.
That's where you gotta come, step up to the plate. And that's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
And that could include your salary, that could include Bill Patterson's salary. I mean, you're saying the swim team's losing money, I'm thinking that's a direct correlation there.
Right, I mean, if, if you look at the large increase in payroll, you know, we're at, we're at 50, where were we at, 534 right now, and, and, you know, that 109 for the swim team, most of that is salary, and, I'm sorry, salary and-
And benefits.
And payroll tax and, and medical benefits. You know, there again, I am not advocating this, but, you know, you take away this swim team program, there's 45,000 dollars that we just plowed.
I know.
They kept applying direction which services the programs that are important to the community, I can't just say it.
Right. So I'm, I'm not advocating that.
No, hopefully we get a booster, somebody gets a booster club.
But booster club leads to all of the issues that were here a couple years ago, and you start having two heads in the place and-
Actually, that's not true.
Yeah.
See, how you figure that?
I've heard that too, I heard it was pretty painful. But I wasn't here.
Well, the booster club would not be under the direction of anybody here.
Yeah.
But you'd still want your head coach to have final say, I would think.
Actually, they can, they can have.
No, they can't.
If you, no, they, they, if it's set up as a 501(c)(3), how would the head coach have any good say?
I can tell you what I know about the, about-
You would have a director and you'd have a board.
Yeah.
I looked at USA Swimming, the one that said that they even talks about saying up a booster club, and it has to have a 501(c)(3), the coach would have nothing to do with it, unless he's on board.
And Tac, he's an advisory, he doesn't have a voting, Jason doesn't have a voting spot on the board or anything, he's advisory.
I heard that.